Okay. I'd like to open the Milford School Board meeting. It is Monday, September 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. I'll start with introductions left to right. Jane Forston, our Business Administration, Ms. Dre Tor. Holly Talapa, our board member. Kevin Drew, board vice chair. I'm Ron Carvell, board chair. Dr. Jessica Heisinger, our superintendent of schools. Mike Hannan, board member. And newly appointed board member, Rick Wood. Do I have any board member comments? Mike?
Mr. Chairman. You know, first off, we had the, we're invited to the New Hampshire School Board Association's, one of their meetings. They hold a few meetings every month, you know, trainings or budgets, but they had a budget meeting in chorus this past last week. And, you know, thank you for agreeing to send some of the new budget committee members and past members. I know Dave Wilson, Carrie, I believe it was Carrie, was it Carrie or Karen? Who's in, was it?
Servasco.
Okay. All right, so great. She's a newly appointed member who went. Susan Smith. I don't know if John went, and I know myself attended on the online, but a great meeting. And so, thank you for agreeing on that.
Yep, absolutely.
Because I thought it was well worth the time and effort to send them.
Absolutely. Okay.
Karen, yes, Karen and Jane and I.
I don't want to leave anybody out, but thank you.
Okay, great. So first, I'm going to actually thank you for that, Mike. First, before I let you speak there, Mr. Wood, I would like to just swear you in. So if you would please stand as the new appointed board member. Just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Richard Wood.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent on me.
And perform all the duties incumbent on me.
As a school board member.
As a school board member.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of New Hampshire Constitution and laws.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of New Hampshire Constitution and laws.
Of the state of, oh, of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I had anticipated making a statement this evening about how excited I was going to be to be working with the community. Instead, I just want to ask the Milford community to keep the community of Farmington, Maine, and the Farmington Fire Department, the families of those killed and injured today, in their thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any other board member comments? Seeing none, reports and presentations, and I'd like to welcome our state Senator Shannon Shanley up for a presentation and discussion. So welcome to the Milford School Board meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate the opportunity, not so much to make a presentation, although that is a very, it's a little bit of an overstatement for what I intend to say, but I would like to just introduce myself now that, again, at the start of the new year, new school year, and what will soon be the new legislative year. I wanted to make sure that all of you know to reach out to me if I can be useful or helpful in any way regarding state legislation, either things that you would like to see happen, or perhaps there are measures that you are concerned about and would like to either, you know, register your dissatisfaction, or maybe we can work to make changes or tweak things that need some reassessment or realignment. I'm always happy to meet with folks either in person, I can have coffee with anybody on the Oval. Early, early morning is fine with me, and late night works too. So I'm always happy to do that and speak individually to you. But I'm also happy to come before you if there were a particular piece of legislation that you wanted me to speak at length about, or to, you know, somehow talk about or answer questions. I would always do my best to do that with a little bit of preparation, just so we know, I know what you would like me to talk about. I would do that and be here for you. This is a very good time of year to touch base. I know because for you folks, it's back to school, and certain pieces of law will be implemented either now or on January 1st, 2020. And that might be, so you'll be anticipating those. It's a good time to talk about what might be coming up. It's also the time that we will be putting forward legislation. So if there are pieces of legislation that you would like to see put in in January, now is the time we have to do it. I know that you have a very responsive delegation to the New Hampshire House, and that they keep you informed on a lot of what's going on, but I just want to add my name to that delegation, and make sure you know to call me as well. And I will, you know, always be available to you on behalf of the Senate. Legislation, the House legislation is due to be put forward now. They're in their filing period right now. I, the Senate has a little bit longer, will be filing a little bit later, so this, as I say, reach out now. The other thing is, the general court website, I think, I think it's pretty user-friendly. And there are different ways of searching, but if you don't, if you can't find something, never hesitate just to call me. I'll leave some of my cards here, and you can call me here, and you can call me at, my home number is on this card, but my office number, I'm there most days of the week, so always feel free to reach out. So that's pretty much what I had to say tonight. So, thank you.
Great, great. Well, thank you for your service up there. Thank you for all you do. I know that we've talked many times. I think that you probably know that a lot of the issues around funding.
Yeah.
A lot of our programs and a lot of our facilities and infrastructure is where we struggle with keeping them alive. We're hoping that, you know, a budget gets put together with some strengths around, you know, education platforms and those things, because if you look at our high school, you know, we're starting to see concerning elements around our structure and our infrastructure that's, you know, weakening every day. You know, when we used to have the building aid at 40%, and we used to have these things, we could move things through there, but, you know, the tax rate and the burdens that we put on our taxpayers are pretty high and heavy in the education funding, and that's what we're, you know, we're really focused on a lot of that as well. So I appreciate all the support in that.
You're welcome. And, and you know that the budget did include quite a bit of additional funding for the town of Milford. The budget was vetoed, but people are working. I am not one of the negotiators. I wish I could come to you today and say, you know, we'd found a miracle solution today, but I know that people who are negotiating on the budget are doing so diligently, and we will, by the end of the month, that the continuing resolution that we passed runs through October, the 1st of October, so we would really need to either, within the next week or so, couple of weeks, we'll either have to find a budget solution, or pass, extend the continuing resolution, and I'd so much rather find a budget solution. So, thanks.
Okay. Any other board member questions or comments? Well, I appreciate you coming in, and certainly you will hear from us, and I know that you do send us emails and keep us informed of what's going on, and you represent Milford very well, and we appreciate all the support up there, you can, for our education system. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you as well. Okay, next on the agenda is a strategic plan implementation. I believe we have two tonight, and first we'll start with Heron Pond, Chantel Alcox, the principal. Oh, is it up and behind us too?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
You have a kind of an extensive plan in front of you. I think it's like 18 pages. But what I have behind you is, I have 15 slides to go through that are more of a summary. Tony has some slides, so if you want to move over that, we'll be super helpful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So while they're getting adjusted, what you're looking at is a couple of pictures from our opening ceremony, and it's tradition at Heron Pond. We all gather outside. This year, Heron Pond, we started the year with 595 students. They sit according to their grade level. So fifth graders feel very special, and the grade levels, the kids, as they grow up and progress, and are making progress as they get older at Heron Pond, sit in a particular order. And the young, beautiful faces you see on the right-hand side are our second graders. At our opening ceremony, we have grade-level classroom representatives from each grade level. They create their hopes and dreams for the year. And so each class has a representative stand in front of the entire school, and they share their hopes and dreams. And so, those are our introductory pictures for the year. I'm here to talk to you probably for about 15 or 20 minutes tonight, just to let you know the, what we have decided upon as our Heron Pond goals for the 1920 year. We worked as a district last year with developing the strategic plan, and therefore, over the summer, each building was tasked administratively-wise to establish, not unusual, our goals for the following year. One additional step that we took beyond developing the goals administratively is, I'm thankful for a group of teachers that came in, and regular classroom teachers and special ed representation came in as well in the summer, August 6th and 7th, to provide some input on the things that you're going to see, and our goals for what we're going to work on at Heron Pond this year. You will also notice the categories. So the strategic plan really broke down into four categories, if you remember. The first is student success. The second is culture. The third has to do with school board policies. And the fourth is family engagement. So you'll see Heron Pond is going to, I'm going to share with you three major goals for the year, and they lay or fold really nicely into the strategic plan. Everything's tied into the strategic plan. So goal one for us is student success. We want to continue to have a focus on literacy, and you'll see that our main goal will be to increase student achievement or proficiency in literacy by at least 10 percentile points over the baseline data for each of the grades. So what we'll be looking for, the data that we will be using for that at grade two is NWA data, which is an assessment that we've used for many years. And we are going to use as our key measure for grades three through five, the New Hampshire State Assessment. What you'll see below that are, how are we going to reach this goal? What are the actions that we're going to take over the course of the year? And some of these actions were actually started in the spring, and last year seeds were planted, and now we're going to continue to build upon those things. So one of the first things, I'll just run through them quickly, but then I do have a slide to give you a little bit more information on each, is professional development of letters training and keys to content writing, implementation of EL education, which is the literacy program, implementation of best practices, and the use of data to drive instructional decision-making, which is a process that we have traditionally used and we're going to continue to use. But we are adding in a layer of the reading specialist, so Heron Pond is very fortunate to have that additional staff member to work with some of our needier students this year. Letters, what does it stand for? Is Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And this training began for our teachers in the summer. JOC's teachers actually worked through it, more of it, over the course of the year last year. Letters training is not a program. What letters training really is, is strong teaching of reading, background knowledge and skills. And we went through one module of it in the summer, and the module that we went through was reading theory, and just basically the different theories of how students learn to read. The other modules and the work that we're going to do over the course of this year are listed, as you'll see, phonology, advanced phonics, and assessment. We were targeting at first grades two and three, because we were thinking the new reading program this year is kind of focused on K-3. So we were, we were focused on this training for grades two to three. But I will tell you, after participating in it myself, and I am a reading specialist, this training is so good that I have asked and did get, did get the green light, and we're going to have all of our teachers through fifth grade trained in all of, in this material. What the goal of the material is, is to really have teachers feel very confident in their understanding of the teaching of reading, so that no matter what reading program they use, they can make really good decisions about the program because of the background knowledge they have about learning about teaching of reading. There are four modules. It's a two-year plan. There are four modules also next year, and those modules are more content-based, like reading comprehension and writing. And of course, that will go across to all of the grades as well. Keys to Content Writing is also a really wonderful professional development, and that we've had on and off for quite a bit of time here in Milford. And, and I think it's so good that we really want to get to a place where we can build some strong, consistent professional development for all of our teachers. This focus this year, where our K-3 teachers are going to be focused on EL education and the new reading program, the focus for grades four and five really are going to be around writing. And in June as well, they received some training in this keys to content writing. The work that we want to do in grades four and five this year is around common, some common writing prompts and some rubrics, so that there's common, kind of common assessment of writing. And we also want to do some analysis of how our students have done on the New Hampshire State Assessment. So those are all the pieces that will come to play as far as writing goes this year for four and five. I've mentioned it a couple of times already. One of the priorities is the implementation of EL education. I do want to let you know our teachers are working super hard. I'm sure Mr. O'Connell will say at their level as well. It's a big undertaking, taking, taking on a new reading program, and, and the teachers are working really hard to understand all of the components and how they work together. What's nice about this program is that it is a comprehensive program, both for reading and writing. It does incorporate some really strong and clear protocols that support excellent classroom instruction. In a minute, I'm going to show you another slide around best practices. And what was exciting for me to see, as I was part of the June training, was there are clear protocols that are in best practices that show up in EL, in EL literacy. So it's really nice to see that carryover. And then, this program also contains embedded assessments, and we're going to work on developing a literacy assessment plan. This is, this is what I was just speaking to you about in terms of best practices. You may or may not know that administrators worked through, and with Bill Rebus, a consultant last year, on best practices found in his book. And we worked with our teachers and talked with our teachers, and highlighted different best practices over the course of last year. We're going to continue this work in a more formal way, and on September 18th, our first early release, we do have presenters coming to JOCs, as well as Heron Pond and the middle school, to, to provide more formal training around the, around the best practices. And these best practices will be used in our, in our working in terms of highlighting for teachers what, what is going well in the classroom, what is working well for kids, and making recommendations as we can. Another priority is absolutely using data to drive our instructional decision-making. We go through a decision, a data drive process, three times a year at Heron Pond School, where we have data meetings, we have collaboration between teachers and special ed teachers, we develop instructional plans for kids, we plan our progress monitoring. This year, in addition to all of those things, as I mentioned before, we have the addition of the reading specialist. We have some other initiatives at Heron Pond that, that I'm excited to see how the data turn, how the data, what our results will be for students who are involved in our co-teaching. You'll remember that we have one team of co-teachers in fourth grade. That means two classroom teachers with one special ed teacher, and one co-teaching team in fifth grade. And they cover both literacy and math. And we also have two language-based learning disability classrooms this year, where students are getting a lot of excellent reading support in, in a way that they haven't before. So we're excited for all of those things. So that covered the first goal of student success. Second goal is promoting the positive culture for students, staff, and families. And what we want to do is increase the awareness and opportunities for collaboration between staff, students, and their families. And how we're going to do this, in terms of the collaboration around staff, is certainly the implementation of our professional learning communities, also known as PLCs. There's already, again, been some training for people over the summer, and we have a complete plan, year-long professional development plan, that I know that our assistant superintendent will be sharing. And we have our time built in to, in the schedule with the early releases, where grade levels will be able to work together on, on some things, and I'll point that out in just another minute. Another really big goal, and I'm so thrilled to know that we have the support of some excellent outside consultants that are going to help us with the development of multi-tiered systems of support to meet social and emotional needs of our students. And we have the expansion of Playworks at Heron Pond School. And Playworks is about building social, emotional skills through the power of play and at recess. So I'll talk about those things as well. Our professional learning committees are grade-level based. They will be focused on literacy, because that is what our student success goal is, literacy. And they will include special educators. We will also have a professional learning committee that is completely focused on behavioral supports and working towards the multi-tiered systems of supports. And as I mentioned before, the times that those meetings will happen are early release times. The key questions, I think it's really important for you to know, what are people going to be doing? What are we going to be talking about at these meetings? And really, we go through this cycle of these questions and these answers. And the questions are, what do we want students to learn? How will we know if they've learned it? What will we do if they haven't learned it? Or what will we do if they already know it? How can we differentiate for kids better? And how do we choose our, how do we choose our goals, and how do we choose our standards wisely for kids, and how do we help them, take them where they are and help them to grow? So that's the work of the PLCs around literacy this year. Priority two, as I mentioned, is the multi-tiered systems of support. You'll see an umbrella. We've talked about tiered systems of support for academics for a long time, right? Tier one being instruction for all students, tier two meaning some additional supports, tier three meaning some intensive supports. I like this graphic, because it really, in the center, in that yellow piece, you'll see it says whole child, because it's taking the tiered system of supports and not holding it just for academics, but holding it for behavioral supports as well as social, emotional supports. So if we can develop this in a very clear way, then we'll be able to really be focusing on all the important components for children. So what I said is that we have a partner there. Eric Mann and Howard Muscat are going to be partners of ours in this project, and our goal for Heron Pond is certainly to have a continuum of services for students behaviorally, and a continuum of students for, of services for social, emotional support and social, emotional skill-building. And priority three for us will be to incorporate Playworks into more of our practice. Playworks is an organization that we partnered with last year. Their goal is teaching social, emotional skills at play. Their goals are using recess as a time where all kids can become involved, and all kids can feel part of. So there's some really good social, emotional pieces involved in there. It talks about every kid having the opportunity to play, about kids choosing where they, where they want to play, being more involved, having adults lead and support games. Also, teaching kids how to resolve conflict. One of the very simple tools that they're taught is rock, paper, scissors, shoot. Like, if we disagree on is someone in or out, we're going to just play rock, paper, scissors, shoot, and we're going to move on, and the game continues. So we have, we partnered with them last year. Our teachers have now had two workshops with Playworks, and they are coming in October to our school to actually support us by going onto the playgrounds at our recesses, and helping us determine what additional games we can put into place. A lot of the games are not, not so much ability-based, but, but our kids are really able to easily join, play for as long as they want, and they can also leave. They're easy, once they learn the rules, to just come and go from, into those games. And our last large goal around family engagement is this. Goal three, to foster and solidify positive relationships among students and families, school staff, and the community, to support our students as contributing members of society. And the ways that we're going to want to work on that this year are increasing our family engagement at school, improving our teacher-parent communication through the new district website and classroom pages, and increasing both intra within the school and inter-school activities. So the first, the first priority of increasing family engagement, some things that we want to do is continue to support our PTO. Work with the PTO on membership drives to increase the amount of PTO support and involvement that we have. We want to increase the number of Heron Pond family events. And some of our discussions this summer, some teachers had some great brainstorming events about cyber, cyber safety, and, you know, different kinds of presentations that we could involve our parents in. This is also an area that Mike Catfield, Director of Special Services, is also supporting us on, and he's already got a menu of parent academies set up for over, over the course of the year, happening at each of the, thank you so much, different buildings, to promote family engagement. And lastly, I have, I'm working with our, another new position, our new social worker, and we want to offer kind of a parent series of workshops, probably in the early winter, around social, emotional skills. And it's totally geared to parents, and it's totally like real-life scenario. This happens, and what are the ways, what are the ways that you can talk to your kids about it that will develop their social, emotional skills? So we're excited to kind of put that into play this year as well. Webpages. We know that the district is working on our new website. It's all under construction, and we're anxiously awaiting it. We've seen the prototype, so to speak, and we know that we're going to be able to add a lot of pictures for student, for families to see, add some videos about things that are happening in our schools. And it's under construction now, but I think, you know, as soon as we're able to get that rolling for everybody, that will be another resource and another place for parents to access information about our schools. And then the last priority really were the inter or intra activities that we can have at school. So we're going to identify all of the things that we do do for family engagement. We want to work towards increasing those. We want to also increase the opportunities for students to interact with students, even within the school. So to start really thinking about that, that our fifth graders would love to take leadership roles on. So how can we do that? Mr. O'Connell and I had a great conversation about, we have reading buddies at our school, fifth graders, I believe, with third graders, that I know the most of, but we thought, wouldn't it be fun to have fourth graders become reading buddies with our first graders? Because when they transition up to Heron Pond and come to second grade, our fourth graders will be fifth graders, and they'll still be together. So, so what are opportunities like that that we can take advantage of? The high school, for several years, had the Community Engagement Day, where they invited third, the entire third grade to come up to the high school, and the high school students planned small activities for all of the third graders, and it was about giving back to the younger kids. So we were going to work administratively with the principals to talk about what are the ways that we can share our kids among the buildings as well, to promote, to promote their sense of community, their sense of, I am part of something that's bigger than me, I'm part of something that's bigger than my classroom, I'm part of something that's bigger than my grade, I'm part of something that's bigger than my school. And so even if we can get our, our young people to start thinking in that way about community, I think that, that would go a long way. So I think that is the summary of what we're going to do at Heron Pond this year. It's a lot. We're excited for the opportunities, and we'll do the best we can. Any questions?
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll have Tony present as well, if you could stay, and then we'll return to the.
Sure. See if there are questions at that point? Sounds good.
Questions for that point. Thank you.
You're welcome.[1750.88][1750.88]
So we're going to be presenting, I'm going to be presenting our action plan for the 2019. And I put 2021 on there because a lot of our goals are actually two-year goals. So we're going to start them this year, and actually, some of them we actually started last year. And in order to really make the commitment to it that we want to, we've put milestones in that are going to take us over the course of two years. So what we did was we ended up with four different goals. I want to just talk about the process that we followed originally, is that we identified, beginning, actually, at the beginning of almost last year, towards the middle of the year, we identified building-specific priority areas that supported the strategic plan. So once the strategic plan was developed, and we kind of knew what the four main goals were going to be, and as we were working towards it, our goals were looked at, the four main goals, which as we know for the strategic plan are student success, culture, communication, and policy, and community engagement. And we decided that our four goals would follow that, but in a uniquely middle school way. So we developed the goals and objectives and referenced the strategic plan, development of descriptors, and the statement of rationale for each goal. Once we identified, we drilled down to develop multiple strategies in accomplishing the goals. So each strategy has multiple indicators of what and how, but each strategy also has identifiable milestones to assist us in gauging success throughout the year and throughout the next year. Various stakeholders were involved in the development of strategies. You know, Mike Hatfield through Special Services, the MMS PTO, professional staff was involved, the administrators throughout the building, and CAS here in town, the Community Action for Safe Teams, are also involved. A teacher committee met over the summertime to review and provide input on the action plan and the development of the three areas of goals, strategies, and milestones. It was interesting, we started off originally presenting to the teachers three-goal areas. And when we met, they were like, well, what about this one? So we're like, okay, yeah, we can re-add, we'll add that back in. So we added a fourth goal in at that point, too. And then there was a final review and we presented it to the superintendent, and now we're presenting it to the community. So these are our four goals that we have for this coming year. Goal number one is the implementation of the Responsive Advisory Program during the 2019-2020 school year, which will result in an increase in social, emotional learning, which we measured based on the five core skills of the CASL Wheel, resulting in less referrals to the office and greater access, actually, to student services. And this references directly objective number one of the strategic plan, objective number two, and number four. So we're looking at student success through SEL. We're looking at development of a culture and a climate through SEL. And we're looking at community engagement through SEL and through the Responsive Advisory programming. Our second goal is the restructuring and reconfiguration of the middle school's schedule and teaching teams to provide more educational opportunities for all students. We felt that this referenced directly to the strategic plan of numbers one and two, which would be student success and culture. That was actually the goal that when we sat down with the teachers, they were like, we should add this back in. Because part of our goal this year is, as you know, last year, we started a major reconfiguration of the middle school, is to continually reevaluate and look at this as we go along throughout the year. You know, nothing is perfect the first time you try it. So you're always reevaluating, you're always looking at it, you're always getting input from everybody so we can determine whether or not this is the best direction that we can go in and how we can improve upon it. Our third goal is the implementation of UDL, which is a Universal Design for Learning Framework to guide the design of instructional goals, assessments, methods, and materials that can be customized and adjusted to meet individual needs. UDL is actually, Universal Design for Learning is actually a statewide initiative through the CAS network, it's a different CAS network through the New Hampshire DOE. We have meetings scheduled for the entire year and phone conferences scheduled for the entire year. We're doing UDL along with our English Language Arts teachers and the special education staff with Mike Hatfield and the special education teachers in the building. UDL is going to be the basis of the middle school's co-teaching model. According to the state, UDL provides a great foundation. And then the woman that we're actually using at the elementary levels, that Chantel is using at the elementary levels, Marilyn Friend, the consultant, actually has worked with the people from UDL, Bill Wilmont and Ari Fisher, worked with them and has stated that UDL will provide a really strong basis for co-teaching at this level. Co-teaching at the middle school is a little bit different than co-teaching at the elementary school. So we had to look for the correct programming for us. And once again, that's going to reflect one and two, student success and culture of the building. And then our fourth goal is that during this coming year and beyond, a continual emphasis will be placed on fostering, engaging, and creating positive relationships with parents and the community. And this goes directly to open communication, which is the third goal, and it also goes directly to community engagement. One of the things that we want to do, and you know, as part of the group that was involved in the community engagement, part of strategic plan, is bring parents back into the buildings. You know, culturally, sometimes parents feel that, you know, the schools work on their own. Other times, you have cultures that, you know, want to be part of the buildings. Our goal is to bring parents back into the building this year, but also to bring our students out into the community this year. Because we feel that's important. And that's why the first goal of the Responsive Advisory is also a number four goal. Because the number four goal is community engagement, and we're going to be doing a lot of community service also through Responsive Advisories. So goal number one, and this is a descriptor of that first goal that I just went over. So when we talk about Responsive Advisory, we're talking about the middle school implementing the Responsive Advisory Program at all grade levels to promote and provide academic and SEL support to strengthen the culture and community climate of the school. The Advisory Program will benefit students through SEL, which is social, emotional learning, by increasing self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, building relationship skills, and development of responsible decision-making skills as defined by the CASL Wheel. Adults will be trained in Responsive Advisory programming and techniques to develop a greater sense of community and well-being in the school. So back in October of last year, we sent eight teachers and myself and Mrs. Gibney, the curriculum coordinator, to Andover Middle School. The New England League of Middle Schools was putting on a workshop on Responsive Advisory. If it sounds familiar to you, it's because Responsive Advisory is an outshoot of Responsive Classroom, which is something that the elementary schools had used and are using in part at the elementary schools. We'd been looking for an Advisory Program for years. We tried building our own, we tried different things. It really didn't work, doing it on your own. So we went to the Responsive Advisory Workshop, the AP people came back, and the first thing they said was, we really need to do this at our school. So through a grant, a title four-A grant, we were able to start last year training the entire professional staff at the middle school. So all of the academic teachers and all of the UA teachers and some of the classified staff members were all trained in Responsive Advisory. We had three trainings last year. We have two more trainings this year, all-day trainings. And the focus of this is to, the focus of this is really to develop a sense of community but a sense of common language also. Teachers doing the same thing, teachers creating an atmosphere where students don't have gutches. You know, it's terrible going from one classroom to another and not knowing what to expect. Through the Responsive Advisory Program, students, because the teachers are using the same language and doing the same types of activities, not just during advisory, but also throughout the rest of their days, and throughout the rest of the day, they start using the same common language, students start feeling comfortable with that. Everybody in our building has an advisory this year. Myself, my assistant principal, the curriculum coordinator, the two counselors, the social worker, we all have our own advisories. I have the greatest little group of advisors, honestly. It's probably the highlight of my day, is sitting down for those 20 minutes and talking to my sixth graders and working with them to help them get to know each other, but get to know me also. It's really a nice part of my day. It's a nice part, I think, of everybody's day, actually. So to help us get to this goal, this is the CASL Wheel and the five areas that it affects, which is what we had just talked about, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management, and relationship skills. All of these things together are part of the Responsive Advisory Program. If you think about it, this is also part of what we talked about during the strategic plan. You know, the idea of bringing a social awareness to students, the idea of building community, the idea of building culture, all of that is incorporated within CASL and within Responsive So for our first goal, strategy number one, the professional development of the staff, most important part. If the staff is trained in Responsive Advisory model and techniques, then the staff will have the tools necessary to build positive, meaningful relationships. And students will develop positive relationships with one or more adults in the school to develop positive peer-to-peer relationships. So what Responsive Advisory does is it helps build an empathetic feeling among students. Students start to get to know each other better, they start to talk to another, they start to realize that they all have common things amongst themselves and that they're not alone. It gives them the opportunity to speak with an adult. Like, my advisors have said to me, so if something's not going right, I can come down and just talk to you. So you can talk to me, you can talk to your teachers, you can talk to your counselors. But yeah, you can come down and just talk to me. And I think, you know, they seem to like that idea. You know, I think they like having the principal as their advisor, too. So some of the indicators that we have to see how this is going, is staff is going to be trained and certified in Responsive Advisory through professional development opportunities. Students, and we're going to be watching for these things, students will develop a positive and healthy relationship with peers and with adults. And we're going to provide a safe environment for students to strengthen their academic and social, emotional competencies, explore their interests deeply, and nurture and develop the development of new skills and talents. So as we get going, we're going to, we are following this program. This year, we decided we're going to follow the program pretty much as it's written so that we can determine what's working for us and what doesn't work for us as a school. And then the Advisory Committee, which meets on a monthly basis, is going through and revisiting each of the, what's the word I'm looking for? They're going to go back and revisit each of the activities that we're doing throughout the day to see how things work and whether, you know, whether it was a positive experience or a negative experience for kids. So we're going to keep working on this throughout the year. The second strategy, obviously, is the rollout of this. So the rollout implementation of Responsive Advisory Program by all professional staff. We'll successfully implement Responsive Advisory and its common language is being used throughout the school. Then teachers and staff will develop appropriate, healthy, and positive relationships with students. And every student will develop a positive relationship with at least one adult and develop skills and strategies for increasing empathy to assist them in developing stronger peer relationships, which will affect school climate and culture. Obviously, the overall goal of this is to develop empathy among students. And we know by developing empathy and having them become empathetic, it cuts down on the teasing, it cuts down on bullying, it cuts down on peer conflicts. Because students start realizing that we're all in this together, that we all have common issues, that we all have common things that we're all working on, that we have more things in common than we have different. So that's the ultimate goal of this. So we have, our indicators are going to be, we're going to be watching for respectful, healthy, and appropriate relationships, which will be evident, hopefully, in the day-to-day interactions, adult-to-student and student-to-adult. A decrease in student service referrals for peer-to-peer conflicts of behavior. However, at the same time, we'd like to see an increase in appropriate referrals to student services. Instead of coming down because they're saying something's going wrong, maybe come down and tell us what's going right and how we can do something, or how we could affect the culture of the building, or that they have a friend that might need some help. So looking at it from a positive way also. We hope to see a decrease in discipline referrals to the main office and the classroom discipline issues. And there should be, there will be a decrease in student attendance issues entirely, as students will develop healthy and positive relationships with peers and adults. One of the things that Responsive Classroom and Responsive Advisory talk about is students liking the idea of meeting in the mornings. I know my own, my students that I've talked to, my advisors, like coming to Advisory. It's one of the positive day that they really like doing. Talking to Ms. Hackett and to people in the Advisory Committee is the same thing. Kids seem to like going to the Advisory Groups. You know, they enjoy sitting down, it's kind of like a downtime for them, if you think about it. You know, in sixth grade in particular, they go to, they start their day with two classes, then they jump into Advisory, and then they go back for two classes. And you can just see the sixth graders come in and they're like, huh! They get to sit down, they get to talk, we get to do a fun activity, I ask them how their day is going, and then they go on to the next class. And you can just see that they seem refreshed, which is nice. So that's our first goal, which is going to be really an SEL goal for us. The second goal is regarding the reconstruction and reconfiguration. So the middle school will be implementing a new schedule and configuration in fall of 2019. This restructuring will provide more educational opportunities for the students, as well as providing stability in teaching assignments to staff. We will assess the changes through the year to determine what works and how we can expand the student offerings. So one of our goals, obviously, from last year was to take a look at our schedule and how we could best work collaboratively with the high school. One of the things that we've already started is we have a Spanish teacher coming over from the high school from 12 o'clock till 2:10. She comes over, she teaches a seventh-grade Spanish class, and she teaches sixth-grade exploratory classes. So we have the Spanish teacher from the high school coming over and doing this, and she's really enjoying it. We let her set up her classroom the way she wanted to set it up. So there were no desks in the classroom, just writing pads that she's doing. The kids are doing a lot of conversational Spanish, which is going to help us to get ready for the next two levels of Spanish, which is the seventh grade and eighth grade Spanish also. So for this, we also have two strategies. If the middle school's schedule and teaching teams are configured successfully, then the faculty and staff will have time available to implement interventions and enrichments, both in and out of their subject areas. Students will have the opportunity to take part in relevant and engaging learning opportunities that interest and challenge them. You had heard Mrs. Alcock, Chantel, talk about a multi-tiered level of system support. At the middle school level, we have our, we're calling it Titan Time this year. It's a half-hour block of time where we're doing academic and behavioral supports for kids on a tiered level. So students who may need a lot of support get a tier three, students who may need some remediation get a tier two, and students that might not need anything will get an enrichment period. So every adult in the building is doing something during Titan Time this year. All the professional staff members are doing something during this time. So we scheduled in, implemented a static schedule, which means we're no longer rotating our schedule. We now have, instead of our six-day rotation, we now have blue-and-white days. Because colors are blue and white, so we went blue-and-white days. So we have Titan Time, and we also have Advisory as parts of this. Teaching teams will also be configured to allow for two-year-old language programs, a literacy lab, a reading, and math lab courses. And staff will develop and implement enrichment and intervention activities to support and challenge students' learning during the scheduled enrichment intervention times, which is our Titan Time. So if we successfully reconfigure the middle school's schedule to provide greater access for programming, then the faculty from both MMS and MHS will be able to implement programs, and students will have opportunities to take high school-level courses and programming from MHS taught at MMS. Or vice versa, we could send our students over to the high school also. So the static schedule will align with the high schools, allowing for shared resources. As I said, we already have a Spanish teacher coming over every day. Students and staff will move between the middle and high schools as appropriate for courses. This is something that we're working with, along with the high school administration. And programming will be identified and/or created collaboratively between the two schools to provide more increased opportunities. You know, this afternoon, as a matter of fact, I was talking with Jen DiMaria from the high school, and we were talking about increasing our career, our career day and our career placement that we do. You know, right now, we do a lot with careers in eighth grade, so we're talking about maybe moving that down to seventh grade and even lower at some point. But once again, these are all in the planning stages. And that's the nice thing about this, is it's giving us, through the strategic plan, it's giving us five years really to look at this and how we're going to implement this and bring it about as we want to do for the end of that plan. The third one is the Universal Design for Learning. So UDL is a framework to improve and optimize teaching and learning for all students based on scientific insights into how humans learn. This will become the basis for challenge students' learning during the scheduled enrichment intervention times, which is our Titan Time. So, if we successfully reconfigure the middle school's schedule to provide greater access for programming, then the faculty from both MMS and MHS will be able to implement programs, and students will have opportunities to take high school-level courses and programming from MHS taught at MMS. Or vice versa, we could send our students over to the high school also. So, the static schedule will align with the high schools, allowing for shared resources. As I said, we already have a Spanish teacher coming over every day. Students and staff will move between the middle and high schools as appropriate for courses. This is something that we're working with, along with the high school administration. In programming, we'll identify and/or create it collaboratively between the two schools to provide more increased opportunities. You know, this afternoon, as a matter of fact, I was talking with Jen DiMaria from the high school, and we were talking about increasing our career day and our career placement that we do. You know, right now, we do a lot with careers in eighth grade, so we're talking about maybe moving that down to seventh grade and even lower at some point. But, once again, these are all in the planning stages, and that's the nice thing about this is it's giving us, through the strategic plan, it's giving us five years really to look at this and how we're going to implement this and bring it about as we want to do for the end of that plan. The third one is the Universal Design for Learning. So, UDL is a framework to improve and optimize teaching and learning for all students based on scientific insights into how humans learn. This will become the basis for co-teaching at the middle school for the 2021 school year. This is one of our two-year plans, because this year is all training. This year, we have consultants coming in, our teachers are going to Concord for training. They will come in, they'll start planning lessons based upon UDL, the UDL model, and as that continues to grow, the following year, towards the end of this year and into next year, we bring in Marilyn Friend, who is the co-teaching expert from the state, the consultant, who will then be looking at our English Language Arts people, our special ed people, and we're going to be concentrating on English Language Arts as our co-teaching model. At the middle school, we're going to be working at content-based instead of grade level. So, English Language Arts teachers will be co-teaching at first with the special ed teacher. Then, we'll move into mathematics, co-teaching with the special ed teacher. So, we're going to keep moving this on so that we have teachers who are skilled in two different levels, you know, using and teaching together, not one person supporting the other, but teaching together in a classroom to provide support for all students so that all students have access. So, once again, strategies for this. If we introduce UDL guidelines to improve and optimize teaching and learning for all students based on scientific insights, then teachers will design and plan lessons together based upon how students learn best. More students should be successful as they will be learning based upon individual learning needs and relevance. So, teachers will begin to design lessons and units based upon UDL model after receiving professional development. Student engagement will increase through the why part of the learning, which provides multiple levels of student engagement in a lesson, and teachers will design lessons and units that will optimize relevance, value and authenticity of task. So, as we move along, teachers learn what, how students learn best, what they, why they learn it that way, and then how to teach it. So, it's a three-part process of UDL. So, if we are trained to implement Universal Design for Learning and implement strategies throughout the school year, then our teachers will have practical understanding and demonstrated success in embedding UDL practices into their lesson. Students will demonstrate academic growth by having UDL as a basis for co-teaching in the 2021 school year. Once again, throughout UDL training, teachers will be asked to implement various facets of UDL in their lessons as parts of the learning process. This will provide teachers with practical experience. While planning, teachers will be cognizant of the UDL guidelines of why, what and how of learning. Their plans are going to reflect these guidelines, and then ELA, English Language Arts and Special Education, teachers will work together and plan lessons that will utilize the UDL guidelines to assist all students in succeeding on identified assessments. So, as we go through, the hope is, and of this programming will be that teachers are working together to teach and differentiate their lessons for all the students in their classroom, provide access for everyone. Then, our fourth goal is regarding community involvement. In the descriptor, we're going to foster and solidify positive relationships amongst students and families, school staff and the community at large in order to energize and support our students to be successful contributing members of society, which will result in greater success now and in the future. So, if the school community, we place greater emphasis in developing and fostering positive community relationships, then the community will become increasingly supportive, and our students will benefit and become positive and contributing members of our community. So, community service projects will become part of the Responsible Advisory Program. Community and business members will be asked to speak and present to students throughout the school year, as well as the continuation of our Career Day programming at grade eight. Community collaborators will be asked to participate in curriculum development implementation. And MMS will be an active participant in district-wide advisory committee on social and business organizational leaders to inform district strategies for deepening and broadening mutual beneficial relationships. So, part of this goal is going to be to reaching out to our community members, bringing them into the building, having them present to our students so that they see their place in our community. And one of the things we talk about with the kids when, at the beginning of the year, is the fact that they're citizens of our school, the school is citizens of the town, the town is citizens of the state, the state is citizens of the United States, and then we're all citizens of the world. So, we try to instill that upon them, and we're hoping that this is going to help us get there. We want to have them understand that being a good citizen isn't just following the rules, it's being a good citizen and participating and being engaged in their community. So, if we increase the number of positive parent engagement opportunities throughout the school year, then our parents will witness the positive attributes of the school community, and students will benefit from a collaborative relationship between home and school. So, through the Building Star Team, which is our leadership team, and with the assistance of the MMS PTO and Special Services, parental speakers will be brought in to present, conduct parent information nights on a variety of subjects. We've also reached out to Monica Galant at CAST, and she's also going to be bringing in presenters for us so that we can do parent information nights. I know Mike is working on his Parent Academies...
University.
Parent University, sorry. And those are all going to be part of the same programming. The newly designed website will be utilized by all stakeholders and emphasized to parents and other avenue to communicate. We'll see an increase in participation and membership of parent groups led by the middle school, PTO, music booths, any sports-based groups, through continued efforts to promote these groups, and community coffees will be offered to meet with the administrative team and discuss issues that community members may have. And we tried that a few years ago, we did some during the day, some at night. We're hoping with this new interest in community engagement that we can get more parents in. We'll do more things at night, we're going to do some things during the day because of different people's schedules, so that we can start having direct input from parents. I'd rather have a conversation with somebody than an email. And that's where we are at this point. So, that's the middle school's action plan for the next year, year and a half, two years.
First off, thank you for that presentation from both of you. It was an excellent presentation, there's a lot of work in that, and I will say that I sensed the excitement in your voice, I also sense a little bit of wow, there's a lot going on here, and a lot of goals and a lot of things and a lot of moving pieces. But it does look like it really is focused on student outcome and synergy between the schools, which we're trying to, as the strategic plan rolls out, I think that's a good thing. I love to hear that students are being able to come to the high school, and we're talking on multiple grades and not the silos and kind of a new wave. So, that's great stuff. Board members, any questions of, any of the, from the presentations? Mr. Drew?
Thank you. I echo that, very good presentations from both of you, and very informative. I just have a question for each of you, I think, in that, other than the website, which we all know is right now a work in progress, do you feel like you have everything you need in order to implement, you know, what you have in mind for your buildings?
So, if you could both probably go up there just for responses so that everyone can
hear that as well. Thank you, sorry about that.
I mean, I can speak for the middle school in telling you that I think we've been very lucky this year, we've been very supportive in regards to professional development funds, which has been a major, you know, a major part of this. The Responsible Advisory was to do five days of training, you can imagine what that was like for about 50 different staff members, and that was all through grants. So, you know, people were being very creative in how we were finding money for things, which was wonderful. I think, to me, that, I mean, that's the support we need, is we need the support from the SAU in order to do the different things that we're planning on doing this year. And I think the fact that we have the strategic plan allows us to tie everything in together and gives us a purpose behind why we're doing things.
I feel that there's a lot, along the same lines with Tony, it is around, it really is around professional, it really is around professional development, and I feel very supported by the various consultants that we have hired, and that the programming for teachers and for all of us is planned over the course of one year or two years. And really, it's not that we're sending, you know, people to one-day workshops, you know, for things that are of interest and come back and share. Everything's really kind of tied together, and I think that we really can see how the pieces are coming together, like that Rubik's Cube, all around the strategic plan. So, to answer your question, I do feel that the biggest component that is moving all of this, it is a lot of work, but it is professional development, and it's planned and it's supported over time with some really strong outside consultants.
Thank you. Any other board member questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to also say thank you, it sounds really wonderful. Especially pleased to hear the community component and the community service component. I think that it's fantastic that you're doing it at the elementary and middle school level. I would love to also see at the high school level. I know a lot of schools have a graduation requirement for X number of community service hours, and I think that if we instill it at a young age, that would be a program that we could easily slide into at the upper levels as well. I had a question about the parental nights. What types of topics did you have in mind, the one that you mentioned at the middle school? And you talked about a budget for that, are you thinking that you would need to...
Well, I mean, we're looking at, hope, talking to Mike, Mike has a number of information, I don't know if you want to come up, Mike, and talk about that also. But, you know, we've talked to Monica Galant about different things that CAST can bring into us, talking to the PTO in my building, we're looking at doing a Breathe New Hampshire, which is regarding vaping. We're looking to bring parents in just to meet with us also, but to see what they have to talk about, too, because sometimes that will drive the discussion also. Now, but we have a number of different things that we are looking at. I know Mike can talk to the...
Sure. So, as we all know, we have so much talent in our district from our staff. So, I sent out an email to my staff, you know, that we share, and seeking, you know, their important presentations they'd like to bring forward, you know, and currently we have two that are set up. One is about teaching students how to read through the use of games, which is very exciting. And the other one is around how the brain works and how it relates to student disabilities. So, I'm hoping to then take what we have now and expand it even further into the regular education, staff members working with principals, and really developing a comprehensive parent university that can benefit all of our community members.
It's a great endeavor. Thank you.
So, I only had one other question, if I may. I heard the word "new schedule" in the fall, so that usually scares a lot of people when we're doing schedule changes, so can you just give a little bit of a, more of a, I guess, of an overview of what that entails? Because that word always scares me in the middle of the school.
Well, I mean, we, you know, we, last year, we looked at our schedule and realized that we wanted to add world languages to the middle school, to increase the world languages, because we've always had them, but a few years back, we brought, we put them into the unified arts area. Talking with Mike Tentis at the time, who was the director of curriculum, and concerns that he had regarding world languages at the high school, we decided to add world languages back to seventh and eighth grade as a fifth core. At the same time, we were looking at our, we always had a block of time that we called RTI time, but the RTI time was short blocks, 20 minutes, you know, when we could fit them in. So, we took some time from other classes and built this Titan Time block, which is basically RTI. It's a multi-tiered system of providing different supports, but it's every day, half hour every day. So, during that time, kids who need their Tier III supports, which are, you know, intensive supports, will get them, students who need maybe some remediation will get them also, but then we're also able to offer an enrichment block during that time, with the ultimate goal that everybody gets rotated to everything, so that a student isn't, I hate to say, stuck in an area, but they might be. So, why not get that child to get out and have an enrichment also? So, the schedule was changed that way, and we made our schedule static, so we stopped rotating our periods as we have done for years, so that we are more in tune with the high school, so we can start doing things back and forth with the high school more. You know, and like I said, this year, we were able to use the Spanish teacher, which was really nice. It allowed us to do a Spanish class in sixth grade, which we wouldn't have had if it wasn't for us, for, you know, Mrs. Davis and I sharing the Spanish teacher. I wouldn't have had that program.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
So, next up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to thank Chantel and Tony for coming tonight and sharing their school plans. The work that's going on there, both of your schools, is tremendous, and I'm really excited to hear from Mr. O'Connell and Ms. Davis at the next board meeting to present their plans and just celebrate all of the wonderful work that has happened, that's been planned in collaboration with teachers and staff across the district. It's really exciting to see. I just want to say a couple of special thanks to all the administrators. I want to send a special thank you to all the teachers and staff, support staff, administration, just for the tremendous work on a great opening of school. It has been a very strong opening, not perfect, no opening is, but it's been a great, very strong opening. And I want to give a couple of congratulations. A big shout-out to Jacob Wilson, tonight he was featured on WMUR, and today he was the recipient of the NHIAA Walter Smith Award at the annual meeting. I also want to send a big congratulations out to Mr. Mark Mora. He was actually named Athletic Director of the Year for Division II NHIAA, and so a big congratulations to Mark. We have great staff here and great athletic programs. Just a couple of announcements, actually quite a few. October 2nd, Demonstrated Success is going to lead a formal data dive training. I know a lot of talk today was around data driving our decision-making and instruction. We have teams of five or six that are going to be heading up to Concord. It's sponsored by the NHDOE. We have teams going from Heron Pond, teams going from the middle school and from Milford High School to attend this data dive training, and they are going to take our teams through our NHSAS, SAS data, and guide them through deep protocols and analyzing our information in order to make some action plans to address areas of need. There's some new policy updates that are going to be needed based on some laws that have been recently passed, SB 263. I don't know if, how many of you are aware, but it was passed by the New Hampshire Legislature this session. Governor Sununu signed it into law in July, and it actually becomes effective tomorrow, September 17th. The new law is going to require all public schools to develop policies and plans to address allegations of discrimination based on several classifications, including gender identity. The issue that many school districts are having is the bill is somewhat vague on what policies we must enact to comply with the law. Many districts who have begun to look at this are seeing gender-neutral bathrooms being one of the biggest areas, as well as locker rooms, that we're going to have to look at. NHSBA is actually working on a policy. I just wanted to make you aware that we're going to need to update our policy on discrimination. Additionally, we're going to need to put in place a policy for field trip approval. Currently, we don't have one specifically for out-of-state and international travel, so when things like the band goes on a trip to Florida or out-of-state, or we have a request coming for the United Nations team to be going to Montreal, I think it's really important that the board review those field trips and approve them prior to us sending our students out of state or out of the country. So, we're going to need to put that into place as well. Another big change that's come from Concord that's going to have a major impact on us is the Medicaid to Schools program. So, just recently, an emergency rule was established in August pertaining to Senate Bill 235, Medicaid to Schools for Medical Services. So, it says New Hampshire schools may only provide reimbursable services within the scope of new rules, and these new rules state that counseling services are only reimbursable when provided by counselors with medical licenses, not just those with educator certificates. The new rules also speak to setting for compliance and reimbursable services, and the new rules, as established in August, will limit revenue to school districts. This could have a potentially major impact on Milford School District, and Jane is actually working on trying to figure out what, just what that impact is going to be, but we are looking anywhere between, what, 350 and half a million dollars it could be on reimbursable revenue. So, next up, the NHA/SEA has requested a meeting with Henry Lippin, the Medicaid director from DHHS, to provide an overview of the rules and field some of the questions. The meeting's scheduled for the 18th in Concord at 3:00, and Mike Hatfield will be attending as representative of the district. Just a quick thing, I just want to say kudos to everyone for our first edition of Connections. We sent it out on Friday, our first district newsletter. It came out beautiful, and we will be sending... It came out beautiful, and we will be sending out our next edition just, I think, the first week of October, and if there's any shout-outs or anything that you'd like to highlight in the district, please send them to the SAU, to myself, and we'll be compiling our next edition of Connections for the community. We've gotten great feedback from everyone on it, and we're looking for new ways to get communication out and celebrate the wonderful things happening here in Milford. Just a reminder, early release, our first one is Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 18th, early release times for the middle high school and Project Drive, 12:00 Project Drive, 12:10 the middle school, 12:12 the high school. Early release time for the elementary schools is 12:45 Jacques and 1:00 Haron Pond. I want to thank Mr. Hannan, as well as Jane, for attending the budget meeting, training for us on Thursday night. Karen Savasko was there in Concord with us. I know that Mr. Wilson was there via online, Susan Smith was there via online, and a lot of really good information, really great questions. I felt really validated that our budget process is really in line with the recommendations, and we took some new ideas, and we're going to be strengthening those ideas. Some of them, we're going to even, I incorporated it into my superintendent's report. One of those things is that they talked about was socializing some of the needs that are going to be upcoming in the budget process, so people not seeing for the first time what the needs are as the budget starts to get rolled out, but sort of socializing and sort of hearing some of the needs, the big-ticket items that you'll be hearing and seeing about in discussion earlier on in the process. So some of the big things that we're looking at, as you know, Google has now, are on this five-year recyclment process that they stopped supporting Chromebooks after five years, and so what that's going to mean is we're looking at the need of about 500 new Chromebooks this year that we'll be bringing forward as part of the budget process. That's going to be a bigger ticket item, new switches across the district to ensure proper Wi-Fi. That's going to be another big ticket item that we'll be seeing. We really do need, all schools have requested this, we've already started budget discussions as a leadership team, updating the library database across the district. That'll be another big ticket item, but there's quite a few littler ticket items in technology that all accumulate in cost when you put it all together. A couple of other big things that really need to start being had in terms of discussion across the community, the track, the high school track needs repair, significant repairs. The barn, that's about $150,000 ticket item that right now is fenced off. Playground equipment, right now, our playground equipment is really aged, particularly at Jacques, we're now repairing the current one and getting that back up and running, but the one at Haron Pond also is going to need some replacements. So those are bigger ticket items. And then we need new boilers across the district, the building automation system at Jacques Memorial, and the building automation controls at Haron Pond. So those are all things that, you know, we should be on the lookout for as part of the discussions as we present the budget this year. You know, we're also going to be talking about the space at Jacques. We are coming apart at the seams, that school is filled to capacity, and so beginning to have the discussions early on and now about space across the district and really looking at the configuration and having those discussions as a community is going to be important this year. We also, one of the things that I asked last year for the music department to do was to undertake a study for us to really look back, you know, back many years as to when was the height of music participation, and then why have we seen such a decline over years with more music participation? So Brad Smith did finally present that report to us just recently, in the last couple of weeks. He came in, he gave it to me, it was an outstanding report. I had him come and present to the administrative team, and he did a wonderful job, and it really does give a long historical perspective of our music program at its height and then our current numbers now. And so I've provided you with a copy of that. I'll be making that report public and putting it up on the website for the community to look at, but you also will begin to see some discussion and I think recommendations coming regarding music programming here in Milford. It's an important part of developing the whole child and providing those opportunities. We don't want to see two freshmen in the band, we don't want to see 35 total, you know, kids in the band. We want to see hundreds of kids engaging in music education, and so Mr. Smith and the music department has brought forward those recommendations. Safety presentation, September 30th, parents of students who attend Jacques Memorial and Haron Pond Elementary School should come to Haron Pond, 6:00 to 7:00, to meet in the cafeteria on October 1st. Parents of students who attend the middle and high school, we're going to be offering that same program on the new ELR lockdown procedures to parents, and so we welcome you all to those safety presentations. We also, part of the strategic plan is developing a district comprehensive wellness plan, so I was able to meet with Jean-Guy Latart and Gail Pousas to work on thinking through Part 2E of the district strategic plan, which says the district will develop a comprehensive wellness plan by 2022 to help students and staff navigate and learn about health, wellness, and emotional safety, and how to navigate challenging situations. So right now, they're soliciting members of this team, and they're going to begin working on this important plan district-wide, and I was able to sort of give them some of my thinking and input on that, and they've already taken it and are beginning to run with it. So we're looking forward to seeing the recommendations that come out of the district wellness committee on that comprehensive plan. The Office of Civil Rights is going to be visiting Milford High School's ATC program. The Department of Ed is proposing the 7th and 8th of November to do that civil rights audit, and in addition to looking at our program and looking at compliance, they're going to be also doing a facilities review of the ATC program to ensure that we're compliant, we're compliant in civil rights. And then finally, school finance, we all know that the governor vetoed the budget, and that has a major impact long-term on Milford. So the League of Women Voters in Greater Nashua is going to be hosting a presentation on ed funding about the inequities of public education, and by the Executive Counselor, Andrew Valinsky, and Attorney John Tobin, that is going to be held Thursday, September 19th, at the Hunt Community Center, which is on 10 Ald Street in Nashua, in the great room at 7:00 PM, and they just asked me to put out an invite to the Milford community if you're interested in attending that school finance discussion, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Any questions of any board members on the superintendent's report? Okay, thank you very much. So next on the agenda is public comments. I'd like to open up the board meeting for public comments. Public comments will be limited to approximately three minutes. I would ask that you would come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and any group that you may be representing. Speakers may offer comments on school operations and programs, however, the board will not hear comments or complaints on personnel matters in accordance with Policy 2152 and 2422, because there are other channels for that. Concerns of school operations should first be addressed through the teachers and the principals, and then through the superintendent in accordance with Policy 3575 that's already established, and staff concerns or complaints should follow the grievance process laid out and established in their collective bargaining agreements, and those should be brought also through the channels, but they should first have gone through the superintendent's office under Policy 2405. This process that I've just laid out for you has been placed in order and in the current policies for a reason, to keep the board impartial on anything that may be happening in the school as we are part of the channel process and could make decisions on any event that may happen in the school when we hear both sides. So I'd ask that if you would come up to the podium. And just as a reminder, this is not a question-and-answer period from the board, it's public comment. We'd like to stick to things that's on the agenda, and the superintendent and the business administrators are here for the board's pleasure to ask, to be in front of the board for us to ask questions to the superintendents along with the administrators as well. So, thank you.
Hi, Diane Dehan, 37 Briar Cliff Drive, Milford. I would like you to please designate someone on the board to go on the Milford, New Hampshire resident page a week before the meeting to post a notice that there will be a meeting, because I can't, I can't find it anywhere where there's a schedule of the meetings, and I'm not that good at the computer, so I rely on the Milford, New Hampshire resident page, which I found out Sunday night there was a meeting today. Is there anyone on the board that would mind coming on a week before and posting it for the residents to know? Many people watch it at home, and I will tell you, I'm getting many texts that people cannot see this broadcast tonight. Some people, Channel 20 is working, some people are watching it on 21, some people can't see it at all. So something is not working tonight with your broadcast too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know that, I did speak with GTM, just to answer that, I did speak to GTM earlier today, the last meeting, because of our pipe project, something was cut. They did assure me that it was fixed, so I will turn that over to the GTM group, and they are not part of the school, so they are an organization for the town and they're a separate entity, so I will speak to them as well.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question on that. So can we post that information one week before?
So we're, as we roll out the website, well, the board will have a full discussion on what, how the announcements are going to come out. They are coming out in a couple of different ways.
Okay. So to answer Mr. Han's question, though, is that something that we can also incorporate or not?
Let the board fully discuss it by policy, that we'll discuss how we can do that and put that in, because there are some things that we're going to be able to do with the social media.
Wilson?
Yes, thank you.
Carla Boudreau, 9 Windsor Drive. To begin with, I think there were some positives, definitely, with the changes in the schedule and lots of changes. I know I had a middle schooler that came home thrilled first day of the extra advisory time, the ability to go out to recess when they finished lunch, those changes, even though they may seem like little things, were huge, and very, very excited about these changes. I do think also it wasn't a perfect day, and we know that from last meeting, and I think there's, there's other things that, that need to be addressed. My biggest fear in everything moving forward, which is what everyone talks about moving forward, and the whole article that I'm sure many of us read, is, talks about inclusion. If we come to the meeting, we're damned if we do, and we want to talk about subjects and ask questions. And then if we don't come to the meeting, we say we're not interested in stuff. We're very interested in having an open discussion. That's why people are here, that's why they want to talk, not about just the great things, about our challenges, rather than ignoring our challenges, actually looking to find ways to fix whatever problem may be that we discuss. And if we're going to have one meeting a month, it's going to limit the ability to talk about things. If we're going to decide what can and cannot go on agendas, it's going to increase the amount of meetings, because things are going to get out of control, and there's going to be specialty meetings called for because of number of voters asking for them, and we're all going to just get worse and worse and worse down a pathway we began, and we can't seem to turn it around. And I want to move forward, I want to face the challenges, I want to stop coming up here asking the same thing, meeting month, year after year. And to quote the article, said it's very scary and very hard to come out and say, "No, I agree with this," to other people. It's just as scary to come up and say, "Fix a challenge, look into a challenge, find a solution," especially knowing that when doing so, myself and 30-plus others, there was a board member who chose to spend her time investigating each and every single one of us on that list, rather than actively taking her time to find a solution to the challenge. And because we didn't finish an investigation, I don't know if it ended with her, I don't know where that went. So that's much scarier than speaking out.
Brenda Walker, Route 13 South. I'm here as a taxpayer of Milford. Back to that article that was just posted in the Milford Cabinet, one of the things that Jessica, that you had said was that you've owned every decision in the past. I had asked for the last 10 months, at least a half a dozen, six, eight, 10 times, you and Ron, who put the budget online. Either I was totally ignored, or no one knew. Now, you own it. You said, "I own putting the budget online," before the pairs were told. I don't know why I had to ask so many times and couldn't get an answer. So it leads me back to, truth is the last resort, that's what I feel is going on, and that's what's been going on for the last year. Truth is the last resort. We want the truth. We shouldn't have to wait 10 months and ask so many times and have it come out in an article, instead of one of the multiple times it was asked up here. It's just not, it's just not the way things should be done. I've never been quoted in a newspaper before, so that was something interesting, but had I been truly quoted in the newspaper, it wouldn't have been, as Ron pointed out, Ms. Walker said, "We've been asking for this for years," which I've said every single time I've stood in front of this podium, we have asked for social workers for years, they've been cut every year. We're very thankful that we have them. I, I think it is something that our district, with the changing dynamics, has always needed. Had you finished the quote, though, you would have also known that one of the things I said is, "Why do we have social workers and guidance counselors doing recess in cafeteria duty? I don't understand that." That was part of my issue. It doesn't make sense. We have reading specialists, social workers, guidance counselors, in the cafeteria, on the playground, doing these things. We eliminated grade-level aid positions, people who make $12 an hour, we eliminated them, we hired a social worker, and they're doing recess duty, lunch duty. That's the stuff that doesn't make sense. So it's not making sense for their time. Why do we have the grade-level aides, the ones that are working directly with the kid, all of it, not all of them, four were eliminated, one position has still been unfilled. Why are those people going, and we're having all these other people doing the duties? I'm understanding it's an issue along the whole school.
Have you, have you asked the principal that question?
So, hold on, hold on, excuse me, excuse me. It's for the board, so hold on a second. So first off, I would say that as you've just stood up here as a taxpayer, as a resident, then did you set a meeting with the superintendent to ask those same questions?
I think we've asked those questions before.
Okay, but my question is, is there's a policy that, you just stood up here in front of it as a taxpayer, there's a policy to go to the administration and get the answers. Okay, I'm going to allow the superintendent to answer that question, because at the last comments, we heard that, and the board was concerned to hear that just generally without the information, but if you're standing up there as a taxpayer, the policy ours, you shouldn't call the superintendent. We've heard that we are going to, you know, we're trying to block people out and we're not trying to hear them. There is a process for staff, employees, to get to the superintendents by starting with teachers, supervisors, and talking with the principals. That's the process that taxpayers can put input into as well. That's, that's where we get the answers, because that is not on our agenda tonight. There's a policy that says we're not talking about things on the agenda, and it's, it's just not something that this board is in front of at this moment, until you can resolve it through the schools. You'll probably get the answer, but I will let the superintendent clarify that.
Just let me clarify that. So are you saying that, Jessica, you had no idea?
So, wait a minute, we're not questioning the superintendent. This is not a Q and A period during our board meeting.
Okay, then we'll let her answer.
So I will let her answer the question on the statistics, because we did look into it when we heard public comment, exactly what this board will do.
So, as you know, Brenda, the duty schedule is a building-based decision. The superintendent, no superintendent anywhere knows every aspect of the duty schedule of every school. So I did do a full analysis of the duty schedule after the last meeting, and what I found was, is that the social worker in the building, out of a 32 and a half-hour work week, does exactly two recess duties and a lunch duty. Each one is 20 minutes long, so 60 minutes of a 32 and a half-hour work week, the social worker is doing a duty, and she's doing them in a social setting, which a social worker, and the rationale of the principle was, the social worker doing a duty in a social setting actually allows them, one, to build relationships with kids, and number two, to actually observe them in a social setting. So that made total sense to me, and actually, I thought, was a very well-planned idea. Guidance counselors, they're the opposite. They actually do two lunch duties a week, each 20 minutes long, and one recess. They actually do two lunch duties a week, each 20 minutes long and one recess duty. Again, same theory was it allowed them to build relationships with kids, observe them in social settings, and even do lunch buddy groups in the cafeteria if they so choose to. So that made total sense to me as well. The aid position, the paraprofessional that we're waiting to fill is been posted. I believe Chantel is interviewing. And the additional duties that the reading specialist is doing should no longer be doing those duties once we get that position filled because then that aide will be doing the duties and not the specialist that we are currently getting ready for to be doing reading groups. So after, you know, consulting with the principal and doing an analysis of the duties, I did give Chantel some feedback based on some things that I saw in the duty schedule. My hope is that she'll be reviewing that with Chris and her administrative team and maybe making some additional modifications or changes throughout the year. But that was one of the first things I saw when I actually got the duty schedule and did an analysis of it. So your question could have been answered the last time if you had just simply brought it to your principal prior to coming to the meeting and making an alleged assumption that somehow we have social workers doing duties all day in the lunchroom or on the recess.
My assumption, that was not my implication.
So excuse me, I will ask it. Both of you talk one at a time.
So I guess all I'd say is that there is so many things that could be cleared up or clarified if the question was just simply brought to the building administrator, not into a public forum where bits and parts of information was given, which led people to believe something that's really not true.
My whole basis of the question is how, having grade level aides that make $12 an hour, having their positions eliminated, how does that make sense if, if generally we want to, we need more support at the school setting, at the lowest setting? That's, you know, it's a rhetorical question, no need to answer it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Carla Boudreau, Nine Windsor Drive. I just had a quick question and procedural-wise, because you were talking about it, Ron, and talking about it for the going on, of bringing up specific items that wish to, to be addressed. And did that last year and nothing came of it. It, you said that, that the board as a whole had to bring it to the legal counsel that was here that evening, sitting in the front row, and then nothing ever happened. So from there, there's, there's no follow, I'm just trying to understand procedure-wise. Is there no follow-up if you, if legal says, don't do anything? Or if you choose not to do anything or, because it was never addressed? I'm just looking to see what is the pathway that you, you would like us to go on?
As I said in the opening statement, I believe that our teachers and administrators at the buildings and then up to the superintendent can solve 99% and give information 99% of the time and resolve those and give clarity to what your question may be. That is an easier process. It's a process that you can have dialogue to and you can work through a solution on every one of those.
Agreed. And I have a meeting on Wednesday at one of the schools with administrators about a separate issue. But the issue I'm talking about was a district-wide issue. So I can't go to every individual building and ask what their thoughts are. So I, so as a group, we came asking the five of you at the, the current time that were there to do something and nothing came of it. So what would have been the next step procedure-wise as what you wish to happen?
It would go to the superintendent if it's district-wide. You would have your meeting with the superintendent laid out in the policies, okay? And we're reviewing some, putting clarity in policies again tonight. And then if that doesn't satisfy or solve that, for the board to stay impartial, we need to hear that from both sides if it gets to the board. Your process would be to request the superintendent that you do not agree with her decision or the decisions of the school districts administrators through the chain. And then she would present that to the board with an opportunity for that as an agenda item for discussions.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with any of the buildings specifically. I want to know why so many people are leaving. That's, that's, that's my question as to why we haven't looked into it. So it has nothing to do with a specific building. It has to do with our entire district.
And I think that the board has said the last meeting that we haven't considered looking at that yet. We are almost fully staffed. We had a lot of retirements. The list was out there. The exit interviews are not part of us. We would expect that the superintendent at some point, now that we're up and running, to go back to that. I don't know the process of what she has set up in that department, but we're not discussing that at the board level at this point.
Okay. So there's nothing within this board for me to do. It would be to do something otherwise, that you've decided to completely table it. That's, that's just what I want to know.
At this point, we are not looking at any of the exits that left the district. We have a total number and we know what each one of those were generally because we did have a lot of retirements. We also said we have a lot of retirements coming up in the next two or three years. We knew this cycle was coming. We didn't see anything else but that. We are fully staffed right now, almost. Is that? With a few exceptions here and there, which is great over many other districts that don't have that. So there are people that want to come in here to fill some of those spots. You know, looking at all of the moving parts and all the hard work the administrators have done for the strategic plan. You know, we're going to have people come and go. That's the part of the process.
But when it doesn't fall into our norm and falls far above, I think it's something that should be looked at just like a strategic plan, just like a portrait of a graduate when we're seeing blips that are way off the norm. And I'm not saying it's five of you. I'm not saying it's any administrators. I, it could be who knows what. It could be contracts people don't like. It could be taxes. It could be who knows. But the fact that we don't wish to even look at it speaks volumes.
I will say that the superintendent is responsible for the turnover of this district, ultimately, okay? What I do see is, how many new students do we have now? 71 new students in, two being placed in, in?
61.
61. So we have people coming in. We have growth. We have an administration team thriving on all of those things. For right now, we don't see a mass exodus. We haven't seen a report. I would hope that the superintendent would monitor the leaving with HR. That's outside of the board. The board does not get into those issues at this time. So that's the answer.
All right. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Suzanne Shadine, Oxbrook Woods. I'm commenting on the article that came out recently in the cabinet. So I want to clarify a couple of things. It's, so in May, our groups, the MTA and the Mesa Group came together due to a lot of issues that were out there. There were numerous issues that were written in our vote of no confidence letter. We all came together to one important meeting. In this article, it says, and I'm going to read it, it says 99% of the unions did not vote no confidence. She said, she's Dr. Hizinga. 99% of the people who went to an after-school meeting voted no confidence. It needs to be clear that 99% of a small group of staff members voted that made that vote. There are 432 members of this district and 99% did not go to that meeting. It is continually put out in every article. It's simply not true. So I want to clarify some of these numbers here. There are, it says 432 staff. Of that 432 staff, that includes everybody in the central office, all of our administrators. That includes all of our non-classified staff. So if we come down to it, we had a total of 206 teachers. Of the 206 teachers, approximately 170 are members of the association. In the Mesa Group, there was approximately 53 members of their association. Out of those 223 people, 144 people came to one meeting where they were asked to come to an important meeting. Getting that number of people, which is 64% of the group, to come to one meeting was significant. We had other people that texted their votes, they emailed us, they called, they sent separate things, and we didn't count them because they weren't physically there. So no, all those other people were not part of this. But 99% of the people, 82% of our teachers are part of our association. 99% of these people at this meeting voted on that. It had nothing to do with the full, total staff at all. And we did vote overwhelmingly in this no-confidence vote. And instead of listening and considering the voice of these members, we now have the board's chair and the superintendent, they've changed this narrative. And they've basically called us a bunch of rabble-rousers and troublemakers, to quote Noam Chomsky, my husband's favorite. And just as a point of reference for us, the town of Milford has 11,501 registered voters. In March, 2,129 people came out to vote to make all the decisions for our school and our town. That's 18.5% that voted there. And they are fully listened to and considered in their decisions. So I will want to make sure I wanted to clarify that so we know that 99% is important.
Thank you. So let me clarify, let me ask some of you. You stood up there and represented the Mesa, the MTA as an employee and as a union?
No, I didn't represent everybody.
So you're representing yourself as, as?
I'm representing myself as a taxpayer, a member of the association, as a teacher here in the town.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Someone that appreciates a straight answer.
Okay. Next on the agenda is informational items, a high school Montreal trip. Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Model UN group is beginning to just think about plans and think about possibly going to Montreal. And I just wanted to sort of bring it before the board as they're beginning their planning process and as we're simultaneously looking at policy on field trips and both across the state lines as well as international, just so that you were aware that we're beginning those discussions. Nothing's been finalized or set in stone, but we may be bringing some more information to you in a future board meeting. So I just wanted to let you know that that would probably be coming as well as a policy.
So let's get a policy committee meeting scheduled on the books to pull down a template from the School Board Association on maybe that trip. When is this trip somewhat planned?
Yeah, it's in, it's in October. So we're, you know, right up the, the teacher put it forward because they wanted to find out, you know, is this even a possibility? And so I inquired of Jessica, you know what? I couldn't find anything in place on it. And so she said she'd bring it to the board. So we understand that it might be a little bit. No, it's November, November 24th through 20, 22 through 24 in Montreal. So it is a wonderful opportunity for the, for the young people.
So I think we can get something with the policy committee. But if it doesn't get through its readings, the board has the authority to approve it based on the guidelines and rules that are established for the trip. So we'll, we'll make sure we deliberate that enough. So if it doesn't get through its process, the board has the authority to approve that.
Okay. And what I'll do is I'll get the additional details of the information to Jessica's things.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Just, just a clarification, Mr. Chairman. So we, we don't currently have a policy on travel or international travel?
I, I don't believe there is one there. I, I know that it was.
Do you have a field trip policy?
Field trip policies, but probably time to look at that one as well. Okay. Next on the agenda on new business is discussion of potential non-budget warrant articles. And is that, was there anything in the board packet that we were talking about, superintendent? Or is this one of these on the schedule?
They're on the schedule, I'm pretty sure.
So as we start, and this is more of a board reminder that as we start our budget process, we will start also not only the budget process from the superintendent's office to put that together, but the board will start discussions of warrant articles. There are some language changes in the law, I think I saw, on some of the warrant articles that are now have to come forward, like our contingency fund, I think, had an amendment or an update. So some of those things we'll start putting together. So the board needs to be kind of thinking that, at those terms and, and starting our process of this really long, which sounds like in your superintendent report is going to be some challenges here with all of this funding issues. So, okay. Mr. Wood?
Would we be expecting an update on those changes prior to?
Yeah, we should all, we'll all get a packet from, from Jane with all the layouts of the legal. I know I saw a couple of those get passed. I don't know if they're this year or implemented next year, maybe. But we'll work all those out, but then we'll get them all to the board members and the budget committee as well. We'll get all of that stuff because there will be an impact there.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the New Hampshire School Board Association 2020 Delegate Assembly Information. I believe I saw the, this is something that comes out to all the school boards. Just something to think about. It's for the delegate assembly, for us to put something forward at that meeting for presentation and support from the School Board Association. It is in your packet to take with you if you think you want to write something up or you think that there's some ideas, then we can put it on the next agenda for that write-up and get the board's support for that to move forward with the School Board Association. Any questions on that from board members? Okay.
I have a question. Have we put, did we put any forth last year? Could you give us an example of one?
So last year, we sent a person up to the delegate. And I believe it was only to support ones that were already printed from three other districts. So we didn't craft our own, but we joined another school district on a couple of different ones that were going forward to give strength in numbers for that change and push at the legislative level.
Mr. Chairman, could I request that you send those out to the board for review just so we can sort of have an idea as to what we've done previously and what might be worthy of our time?
Yeah, I could send the list all of the ones from the other schools that are also.
In my time on the board, I don't think that we've put a resolution forth ourselves. But as the chairman said, we, we have, you know, expressed some support of, of other ones that, that have happened. But typically, we will send a delegate, and we, I'm not sure when we vote on that, but we'll vote to send a delegate to this conference each year. And I think it happens in January.
It is in January, the end of January. Okay. Next on the agenda, VIP tires and service donation. You have a email in your board packet. Is that what this is?
Yeah. So after speaking with Jane, Mr. Chairman, it seems that there's a need for a special meeting to be able to vote on this because the donation may be over 7,500. So essentially, VIP tires and service is looking to provide all the sales from October 1st through November 22nd. From their company, donate that to the Milford School District, which is awesome. And so recent programs, they've raised 7,200 in West Lebanon, 4,500 in Framingham, Massachusetts. And the board would have to in a special meeting accept this donation. I didn't realize that until looking at the policy and speaking with the business manager. So we may have to do that for the next board meeting.
Yeah, it has to be its own notice of the meeting.
Yep. So I just wanted to mention it tonight. And then prior to the next board meeting, if we could accept that, that would be.
Is there any time constraints on losing this money? Do we need to come?
I don't think so. I'm going to call Lynn Campbell tomorrow and see if we can begin it just a couple of days after the next board meeting.
If it, if it needs, if there's a chance that we're going to lose this part, we can call a meeting within the timeframes with this week or, or next week, the fastest we can get the board together.
First through the 22nd, so it's probably some time restriction.
Yeah. So just find out what they say. If we have to come back in three days and not miss that opportunity.
I will. I thought it was a very generous offer and definitely money we could use to help kids.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify too, for everyone in the audience and if anyone can see this at home. So basically, it's an oil change for education program. So anybody who gets an oil change during that timeframe, they'll charge you just $10. And 100% of the proceeds for the oil changes will be donated to us. So I'm also in support of an emergency meeting or whatever we need to do because we don't want to wait till mid-October to start taking advantage of that. And it would be great, I don't know what the deadline is on the website, but if we can't get it up on the website, to blast it out on the Milford residents page at least, or send it home in, in school notices as well. It's a really fantastic opportunity.
Yep.
Okay. Next on the agenda are the policy proposals. Uh, next on the agenda are the policy proposals. They should be in your board packet. They were also put up on the website. And they were reviewed, they were set for the last meeting for the first reading. We pushed those to another first reading after taking some input from the board members. I also made some changes from input from Paula Duran, who made some good comments up at the board meet, at the public comment for, on the policies. So in front of us now is the policies of, that are moving through the system as a first reading. So as this process goes, we could go one by one. I'm hoping that we can just go in order, and the process would be that we would need a motion and a second and a vote to move it to a second reading. So the first one on the policy is Policy 1001, School Board Vision Statement, that is in your packet. Do I have a motion to move Policy 1001?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, can I, can I make a motion to add to it before, but before we accept it?
Not, not just yet. That's processes, there's a discussion point after the second. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Kevin seconds it. Discussion. Any discussions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see an additional line added to the proposed vision statement. So we're doing the vision statement first, correct? 1001?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I think that it's important that we align it to industry demands for jobs. So if we could add one sentence, "We will nurture the skills, interests, academic, and extracurricular strengths of each student, encouraging them to align their educational pursuits with current and future market needs and trends," just to make it more targeted toward that gap.
Any other?
Am I correct, Mr. Chairman, that the current way it's written is consistent with our strategic plan?
That is correct.
So our strategic plan doesn't take into account the market trends and needs and making sure that our students are aligning themselves to fulfill those needs? I did some research on other districts' vision and mission statements, and they all seem to have a pretty strong career connection focus. So I think that it's important, especially since we are a CTE center, to incorporate some verbiage that includes that focus.
Any other discussions?
Is that a motion to amend?
Well, no, it's a discussion point. I think that we have to go to a vote on if it moves to a second reading or not, based on discussion points. Any other discussions on that? All those in favor of moving the Policy 1001 School Board Vision Statement to a second reading as is? One, two, three. Mike and, all against? All opposed to moving it to a second reading? Holly and Mike. Motion passes to move it to a second reading. Uh, next on the agenda is Policy 1005, Mission Statement, First Reading. Do I have a motion to move Policy 1005 Mission Statement to, from a first reading to a second reading?
So moved.
Mr. Wood moves. Mr. Drew seconds. Any discussion?
Yes, again, I believe it's important to have something that references the job needs in the current and future markets, so I think that as written, it's fine. I would like to see an addition of one statement. "Our primary focus is to ensure each and every graduate is fully prepared to pursue higher learning opportunities and in-demand careers, enabling them to become positive role models, responsible citizens, and innovative contributors to a robust, dynamic economy."
Any other comments on this policy? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving 1005 Mission Statement from the first reading to a second reading. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes to move to a second reading, three to two. Next policy is 2150, General Rules for Board Meetings, First Reading. Do I have a motion to move 2150 General Rules for Board Meetings from a first reading to a second reading?
So moved.
Mr. Wood, motion to move. Mr. Drew seconds. Any discussion?
I have a discussion. I question the necessity of the final statement right before the reference RSA. "The presiding officer may rule any member or other person out of order if such person..." I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I, I think that you give as a basis for the suggested policies samples of the national or New Hampshire School Board Association's policies, which I think are cleaner, and I, I think it makes sense to utilize their policy and not sort of make changes that, I, I'm not sure I understand why we're making those changes, but while we're on the subject, I just had a question as well. The reference documents for the remainder of the policies that you want to revise or change are based on 2008 School Board Association policies? So I just had a question, and Jessica, you might know this answer. Are we a New Hampshire School Board Association Policy Service subscriber?
The Service subscriber is only means you get their database to go in for references.
No, it doesn't. It actually, I looked it up.
So it is not, the policies are samples, and they are examples that we subscribe to by cost, and we have access to those databases, and we can pull those down. We can subscribe to say that we would follow all of the New Hampshire School Board Association policies, but then we would have to adopt every one of those samples as the guiding rules for Milford. We do not do that. We have not done that in the district, ever. We've created and crafted and pulled things down from the policies, and that's how those policies have been created, through the policy committee, through the levels of the two readings, and then they've been developed for use here in Milford. And they're not all the same pieces.
Thank, thank you for the feedback. According to the New Hampshire School Board Association website, "One of the most important duties of a school board is to establish school board policy. For an annual fee of $450, your school can become a policy service subscriber. Policy service subscribers receive the following benefits and services: Ongoing policy development and general legal information from the New Hampshire School Board Association's staff attorney; Twice yearly, New Hampshire School Board policy updates, including new and revised New Hampshire School Board policy samples."
Point of inquiry, Mr. Chair?
Access, I'm sorry, I was talking. I believe that in your policy changes, you say that "No school board member shall interrupt another school board member in the middle of..."
However, we're on a point of order, so we're talking about this policy, and you're going on a website.
I have, I have two more, well, I'm going on the New Hampshire School Board Association website.
So the School Board Association, Holly, is a setup here of all those services that we can prescribe to in our membership. We've chose not to do it. You are on the policy committee. You had an opportunity.
We've been to one meeting. You, you've had, I've had one meeting since I've been on the policy committee.
Well, the policy committee actually met twice over the summer, which you were with, and then once prior to that, but this language that's here-
I've been to one meeting.
This language that here is right here in their sample policy, on the last paragraph that you say is not there. It's on the sample policy.
Okay, I'm not sure why you're arguing with me. I'm trying to give you the benefits of joining this program for $450.
We're already members of programs.
Instead of making customized changes to policies, we're utilizing-
Excuse me, you are out of order here.
I'm out of order.
Out of order here.
Based on what?
We're not arguing on the policies. The policies are being here for the board to move through them, because you, you were part of this policy creation in the policy meetings. All of these were fine.
Ron, you've invited me to one policy committee meeting, and then the rest of us all got together as a board and looked at some policies.
And with legal, with all of them, and you were part of it, and now, we're here.
Recommendations or changes for, for the reading to bring them.
Okay, you have an opportunity of discussion.
Well, do I? Do I have an opportunity of discussion?
You are, but you're now going on a website. You're going on a website, trying to tell us what the subscription is. But we don't work for the association. The association is our membership.
Ron.
We don't follow what they decide to do.
I can't blindly accept policies that have, like, random changes based on how you want to do things, not based on how everyone wants to do things.
It's not how we all want to do it. Go ahead.
The point of inquiry is-
Excuse me.
The point of inquiry is we're, we're not acting on the motion.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm asking the question of, can we act on this motion that's on the floor currently?
We were discussing, it was still in discussion stage, Rick.
But-
Respectfully, discussing is not reading a website services.
I wasn't planning to read it. I was just planning to bring it up, but then I was told that I was, I had inaccurate information, so I was clarifying.
So in front of the board is a motion to move this policy to second reading. I have a first and a second. All those in favor in this policy as, as written tonight? Motion passes four to one. Do I have a motion to move Policy 2151, Board Member Use of Electronic Devices from a first reading to a second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Woods. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Drew. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Holly, any vote opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion passes four to one.
I just want to put on the record that the reason I'm opposed is because for each and every future policy, with the exception of exit interviews, which I will speak again, my grounds for being opposed would simply be that I believe we should utilize the New Hampshire School Board Association's standard policies rather than having someone customize the policies to fit specific agendas. So I just want that to go on record.
Mr. Chair, I move Policy 2152 to second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. Uh, next on the agenda is Policy 2158, Non-Public Session, First Reading. Do I have a motion to move Policy 2158, Non-Public Session?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Moving the, motion passes, opposed. Motion passes four to one. Uh, next on the agenda is Policy 2162, Agendas. Do I have a motion to move it to a, from a first reading to a second reading?
So moved.
Skip over 2160.
Did I move over 60? Well, I may have. Hold that motion. We'll, we'll come back to that one, because I seem to have dropped that off my package. So 2162, do I have a motion to move to a second reading? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor in moving it to a second reading? All opposed? Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to move Policy 2160 Minutes from a first reading to a second reading?
2160, isn't that what we just acted on?
No, we just acted on 2162, because I missed that minutes one.
Yes, so moved. 2160 to second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor of moving 2160 to a second reading? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. Policy 2327, Data Records and Retention. Uh, this is a quite lengthy one with all the updates. Do I have a motion to move 2327 from a first reading to a second reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
One question. Uh, so the, the timelines that are set out here are set out by best practice, court ruling, law, the timelines that are in here, where are they all based on RSA?
All law.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussions? All those in favor of moving Policy 2327 to a second reading? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. In that as well, um, was both the 2327, of the other extension of that policy would be Policy 2327-1, Local Records Retention Schedule, First Reading. Do I have a motion to move that to a second reading? Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Which one are we on right now?
We are on 2327-1, Local Records Retention Schedule. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Uh, next on the agenda is Policy 2402, Cooperation and Respect. Do I have a motion to move that from a first reading to a second reading?
So moved.
I, I have a discussion point on this one.
Hold on a second. Any discussion? Holly?
So you're calling this policy Cooperation and Respect. You're basing it on a school board policy published by the New Hampshire School Board Association, which is in many ways our governing force, called Staff Conduct. So I have a problem with the, the fact that we're not calling it Staff Conduct, that we're calling it Cooperation and Respect. And again, I would so move, or, or I would suggest that we utilize the policy as it stands with the general provisions, the adoption and incorporation of standard code of conduct for New Hampshire educators, as opposed to all this additional verbiage that, that you've put into this one. I think that, you know, we talk a lot about mending bridges, and, and I'd really like to believe in my heart that that's what we're trying to do, and I think that one of the easiest ways to do that is to let people feel like, A, they matter, B, their voices are heard, and, um, you know, to have some basis as to, as to what we're presenting and, and trying to pass be based in historical data. I know that, um, you know, Cheryl or Dodi reached out to us, asking to, um, execute Article 20, Section C of the Collective Bargaining Contract, where they could basically partake in some of the policy changes, and I was vocal at the last meeting. I think that we should have more involvement on the policy committee from the employees of the district, as well as, I think, it would be great if we could have involvement as well as just residents of the district, taxpayers. So again, that one, I kind of do feel really like it would make a, it would mean a lot to the staff to have that called, Staff Conduct, and to have it be based on, you know, published policy as opposed to calling it Cooperation and Respect. I, I don't expect to get any support, but I did want to let people know, that's what I think, based on my research.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike. Mike?
Yeah, I, Holly, I agree 100% with you as far as the intent. I'm just-
I'm just, what would you, you know, maybe it would be a good idea to, you know, take it onto a next reading so we could have more discussion on it. Is there anything in particular that you didn't like so we can think about it? Or, I agree with you.
I just think that, you know, we had talked about, and it's going to be on a future policy agenda, I know, the actual ethics policy. And I think this is sort of combining the two with all of the additional ethical standards. And I think that if we just keep it clean and keep it based on the staff conduct, which is the sample policy that the chairman included in the packet, which is what the revisions are based on, I just think it makes a lot more sense. And then when we get to the ethical, you know, policy at the next school, at the next policy agenda meeting, we can address that from that perspective.
Mr. Wood, discussions?
Just two questions. The title of this has not changed, is that accurate?
That is correct.
And is there a venue, I'm trying to look, obviously, I'm trying to get up to date with the, all of these policies, but it appears that there's staff concern and complaint policy, which this has been in the public view now for at least four weeks, at least three weeks. So my question is, is have we received any feedback through that from staff?
So like I said at the beginning, I took the last public comments when they were posted and made some adjustments to some of those comments. I will, that's the input that I've got, plus other board members that sent me stuff to also update this before the first reading.
So my preference is to move it to second reading. It's been out there for at least three weeks, there's been ample time for public comment. I had time to actually review it and make comment, so I guess I don't understand why we'd want to delay it. We can make changes between now and second reading, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Yeah, I would prefer we move to second reading, and then if we need to make changes, we can do that.
Okay.
So Mr. Chairman, what is the policy for making changes between now and second reading?
It was the same after we put the first changes. We took input from the public and we incorporated those. And let me just.
So we or you? I just, I'm trying to understand the policy.
Other people put stuff in and we made changes to the master document.
So who made changes to the master document?
I typed them in, Mr. Wood typed some in, and then we put them together and we put everybody's pieces in. It was the same way.
When was Mr. Wood given access? I wasn't given access to make any changes to the master document. I would have loved to have done part of that process, especially since I'm on the policy committee.
So they were online. So, so let's clarify this. So you've made some statements that I've created this. This entire policy was written by this board collectively, without Rick Wood. Collectively, you were at that meeting, so hold on, I'm speaking now.
Ron, you gave us documents and you asked us for input, and you took a little bit of our input. I never had access to any.
You had those things.
Online document. You never said, if you want to make changes, here, turn tracking on.
Don't even, you had access to our website? You had access to these at the last two weeks of the.
I had access to your website. So I went on to the website and everything is listed as a PDF. I couldn't even copy and paste it.
You've had access to these? These were sent out to all of us? How did Rick get them?
And I did make changes, and I recommended many tonight, all which have gone.
Tonight, if you would have, if you would have sent them things right after the meeting and continued it, then I can't help you tonight, they're up in here, we're not going to stop this.
The protocol isn't to conduct our business meetings here.
Your only work isn't in front of this board.
You know what, today is my son's 14th birthday, Ron, and I spent the entire day going through every single one of these, making extensive notes, but you didn't want to hear anything that I had to say.
Because we're already at that point, that this stuff should have been done.
We're reading it, we're reading it tonight, Ron.
We've been working on these for all summer.
I wasn't given privy to.
So we're going to move to a vote, so. So I have a motion on the floor, any more discussion? All those in favor of moving 2402 to a second reading? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. Policy 2417 is the exit interviews, which is in front of this board to be repealed and removed from our policies. Do I have a motion to move that to a second reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Discussion?
Again, so we have an opportunity to still discuss after the meeting, correct?
Well, we have, we've discussed this a couple of times, but yeah, we can have discussions now and, you know, any discussion points before the vote to move it to a second reading.
I'd like to add discussion points. Mr. Hannan, if you have some, go first, please. Okay, so I see, I understand that your justification for wanting to remove this, Mr. Chairman, is because you don't believe that it is the board responsibility to be involved with exit interviews. However, I think that it is important to have a policy regulated by the school board that does clearly call for exit interviews, as was brought up again this evening. If we had that historical data and if we looked into it and if we understood why things happened, it helps promote positive growth in any business, in any industry. If something unusual is taking place and we don't study the data points, we don't learn. We don't have the knowledge or the power to ensure positive movement forward. I would like to see an exit interview policy and procedure in place that still allows, and I found a great one, which, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd love to send it to you. It's borrowed from the Twin Lakes School District Number Four. It's a resignation exit interview policy, and I think that it gives a lot of credibility to why we would want to gather this information, and it takes into account your concerns about, you know, privacy and, I don't think that the school board necessarily needs to be involved in the exit interviews, but I do think that we need to have access to that data. And I do think that we need to give different types of opportunities to employees leaving the district, whether, for whatever reason, you know, whether that be face-to-face, whether that be an electronic one. So I'm not going to read this, because I'm sure I'll get cut off trying to read it anyways, but I will send it to you. And I do think it's important that we don't repeal an exit interview policy entirely. I think it's really important that we keep something in our policies and we just address your concerns about not asking board members to be present during exit interviews.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Hannan?
You know, I apologize, because I know this has been in front of us for a while. This is, this is one of the policies I've struggled with as far as I understand the nature of removing it, but I still think there is an opportunity to revise it, you know, so we're not, as a board, we're not losing that data or the ability to have that information in front of us and be able to, you know, on a regular basis. So, you know, I don't know what you would call it or what have you, but, you know, I agree with Holly as far as, you know, maybe, you know, we take a look at it and change the language and maybe even, you know, change, you know, the title from exit interviews to something else, so we still have that information in front of us and we have that opportunity.
Mr. Wood?
Couple of questions. Mr. Chair, so the way I'm reading this policy that currently exists, this is the board's involvement in exit interviews, is that correct?
That is correct.
And there's nothing that prevents the administration from conducting exit interviews regardless of this policy?
No, I believe that there are exit interview process already by school administration policies and operating in the district for HR. So those exit interviews and all of that data is still at the SAU administration office, but not involving the board.
So this board can request that data at any point, is that accurate?
I think in a general report, yes, the executive board can see that.
Just one more point to Rick. You know, having a policy in place, you know, for us to be, you know, obviously to get that information and data, I think would be important, you know, so we understand those steps, so we don't overstep our boundaries, you know, also.
Mr. Chair? I guess my point is, is that if we're, I don't think we need a policy as a board to take board action to request the superintendent administration provide data. Anything, anything that is happening at the administrative level is by our policies and by the statute is under the purview of the superintendent. So a board policy for something that many of the collective bargaining agreements put us in a position to be, if you will, an arbiter at some point in the process, a board policy in somewhat conflicts with that. So that's why I'm kind of conflicted. It's here, but I understand why repeal might be valuable if, and especially if we can still gain all of the data points that I think we all want, seriously. I mean, we're interested in data as to what's going on, that gives a picture of anything that we're doing. So I'm not opposed to repealing the policy, because I understand that we have the ability by board action at any point to direct the superintendent to provide that data.
And just for some history, this was one of the policies in front of legal counsel that advised us that we should not have. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'm not really opposed to having a policy for exit interviews for the district that sort of directs the HR and the superintendent on how, how that should occur. But this policy itself is, is only about the board's involvement, and that's, that's all it addresses. And, you know, we found out, you know, over the last few months that it's confusing, it's poorly written, it doesn't really make any sense. So this policy as it stands, you know, really, you know, has no business in our policy manual. But that's not to say that we can't come back and revisit and, you know, establish another exit interview policy. So, you know, I'm in favor of repealing it, but then, you know, certainly would be open to, to looking at a, another policy.
Absolutely. Any other discussions? All those in favor of moving this to a policy 2417 Exit Interviews to a second reading for repeal? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. There is no old business in front of the board tonight. The next is some housekeeping items. In your board packet is two minutes, the minutes from July 15th and the minutes from August 28th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 15th and August 28th?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Mr. Hannan? All those in favor, those will be just Mr. Hannan, myself, Mr. Drew, and Ms. Talapa for the vote. All those in favor? Motion passes four to zero. Also in your packet is a approval of the non-public minutes of August 28th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes from August 28th of non-public? Hannan, do I have a second? And again, those will be only the votes of the four. All those in favor? Motion passes four to zero. Mr. Hannan moves, Mr. Carvell seconds approval of the manifest. All those in favor of approving the manifest? Opposed, seeing none, motion passes five to zero. In your board packet is both the classified appointments for information only and employees leaving service for information only. Any questions of the superintendent on those two information sheets? Seeing none. Do you have any questions? Okay. None? Okay, seeing none. Next is public comments, and I will just remind you of the rules I stated earlier.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were ready for it.
Yep, I'm ready.
Yeah, this is Pete Basileir, 32 Spaulding Street, town moderator. And as town moderator, I do have a couple of openings on the Budget Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to put out in this forum that if someone is interested in serving in the, on the Budget Advisory Committee, I'm happy to talk with them about it. My email address is on the Milford School District website as one of your elected officers. And just so you know, the committee meets every Tuesday between now and the deliberative session in early February, with the exception of holidays like Thanksgiving and the end of the year holidays. So it's a, generally speaking, it's a short-lived committee. So I thank you for giving me that opportunity.
So just, how many positions are on there?
I have to go back.
Okay.
Two anyways.
Okay.
I've got a couple of those pending. I have a question, I have a question. Mr. Carvell, you said that you and Mr. Wood looked at the policies and made the changes that were in the readings tonight. Okay, I just want to remind the board that Mr. Wood was not a member of the board until you swore him in tonight at 7:00.
So we've already sworn him in, this was ceremonial. We sworn him in way.
That wasn't said earlier, so who's, did Gina swear him in earlier?
I swore him in early in the week to get him access into the schools for the budget.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that, because you left the wrong impression with the ceremony. The policy committee, who, which members of the board make up the policy committee?
Myself, Holly are the board members that are on the policy committee.
The two board members, you and Holly? So.
Actually, originally, myself and Ms. Seacrest, until Mr. Carvell asked Ms. Seacrest to switch committees with him, so he could be on the policy committee. For full transparency.
Okay, so the policy committee has been three members. Is that right? No.
No.
Oh, five members? No.
No, there's two members on the policy committee.
Right.
Holly and myself.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Board members. There are others on the policy committee. But they're not board members.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So I have a question, or actually a comment. In the, in the school board vision statement, I understood Ms. Talapa to say that she wanted to have some, well, she was suggesting something along the lines of having the vision include goals for our student graduates to be well-prepared to enter the workforce. I'm paraphrasing. And the only objection I heard to that, I think, was Mr. Wood's comment about, well, it's, that's in the strategic plan. Is that the reason why the members voted not to include that proposal or that idea? Was because it's already covered off in the strategic plan?
I can't speak for the other board members. Of what, and it's not really questions, this is a public comment. So the board moved it to a second reading, I'm sure, as you heard, there will be amendments.
I didn't want to draw the wrong conclusion, but it just seems to me that the vision comes first, the strategic plan comes second. And the vision, which is developed by the board for the board, as elected representatives of the community, should have the sufficient direction for the strategic plans. So in my opinion, that the ideas that Ms. Talapa was proposing are entirely valid, because the way I view this, the vision comes first, it's your view, vision for the community, including our youngest people, and from that flows the strategic plan which implements it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support, Mr. Basileir.
Diane Dehan, 37 Briar Cliff Drive. This message is for Ron. The people at Granite Town Media would like you to text them at communitymedia@milford.nh.gov as to what box you have with Comcast, what kind of system you have. People in the community are very upset. Some people couldn't watch this at all, some people can't hear anything, and the community is upset. And granted, they could all drive down here and see it, but I understand they have children, they have other commitments, and now the taping of this is flawed, and I would really like to see this fixed before the next meeting. And I would like to state again that I find it kind of arrogant that you chose not to say, sure, I can go on the Milford, New Hampshire page, which the superintendent's husband is a member of, maybe he could be representing the board and put down when the meeting is. Anyone could do it. And I find it very rude that you chose not to respond positively to my request.
Thank you.
Steve R. Doughty, 19 Johnson Street. I'm a 30-year teacher in this district, and I'm looking at, before you go to your second reading on. on cooperation and respect. We went from a four-page, four, I'm sorry, four-and-a-quarter-line document to two pages. And it says employers are put on notice that this is not intended to be exhaustive or complete, which means we can throw something else at you if we want to. Employees who fail to abide by the terms of this policy may be non-renewed and/or face discipline, up to including termination. Well, you have things in there that are kind of vague. District employees are responsible for providing leadership in the school and the community. And we have requirements to the community. Obey all local and state and national laws. If I get stopped for speeding by the old police station, I broke a local law, could I be terminated for that? Effect this in the profession through research. Are we going to be required to do research? If we do not do research, are we going to be terminated? Make just courteous and proper relationship. Who's going to determine what those are? I think you guys have added so much into that to have a way to get rid of anybody you wanted to based on this. That's the way I look at it. And I think before you go to your second reading, you might want to look and say, have we overdone it here a little bit? Because the way it looks right there, every one of us has done something that may be not quite right because it says they're going to be held to your standards on and off duty. I don't swear in front of my students, but you might hear me swear outside. Is that proper conduct? According to this, I could be terminated for that. Just something to think about before you go to your next reading.
I appreciate your feedback. Which is why I suggested that we stick with the original document, the staff conduct.
Point of order.
Point of order came from another board member, but-
I'm not allowed to respond to comments?
No, you're not. The board, the board chair has to recognize you if you'd like to speak on something. Please read the policies that we have in place already.
Actually, Ron, you know what? I'm going to call a recess right now, which I do have the authority to do.
Sure, by motion, if you'd like to call a recess.
Sure, I'm making a motion to call a recess.
Do I have a second? Motion is seconded. All those in favor of a recess of the board meeting? All opposed?
Okay, well, I just realized that I have a screaming migraine and I'm leaving.
You're welcome to do that.
It's not like my vote counts anyway, Ron. Marcia Brew, 11 Flocksmore Circle. I just, this is a comment, public comment, right? It does seem like some board members are only trying to better the rules and policies to better our community. I don't see that happening here. The policy on cooperation and respect is one, Mr. Carvell, you definitely need to go over it again because it's not happening here at these meetings. There's being interrupting, bickering, not letting people finish speaking. It's an embarrassment to our community, our school board. I, I'm wondering if the school board itself has a policy on bullying in here because I see a lot of that going on. Thank you.
Suzanne Chedeen, Oxbrook Woods. I'm also commenting on the policies. I guess there wasn't a lot of comment on it last time because the whole policy discussion was tabled until this meeting. So, when you're saying you've only heard a few, I wanted to know about that. You said last time, Mr. Carvell, that the policy meetings are public. Is that correct?
It's correct.
So, the policy meetings, though, they're held in the SAU conference room. Is that correct?
Sometimes they're there and they've been in here over the summer.
Well, the last few ones said that on August 1st and August 8th, we're at 5:30 in the SAU conference room. And that conference room holds about 10 people, I would say. It's very claustrophobic because there's no windows in there. So, I find it very hard that the public here could attend that meeting there to give input. So, I'm going to suggest that possibly the meetings are a little bit more open to the public and allowing the public to have input into them. Because as some of these things say, if I read this, the district employees are responsible for providing leadership in the school and the community. Am I signing up to be a Boy Scout leader again? I think, I thought my years without it done. I don't know. But now I'm an employee here, so I'm going to be held to that? I'm not sure. My language while driving is not the greatest, so I'm not sure am I going to be held to that if someone drives in the car with me. There's a lot of issues here with this. This is very, very restrictive on both sides. And I do believe you need to reread the bullying policy to see what it looks like and sounds like. Ms. Talapa will agree with you also.
Brenda Walker, Route 13. I am also speaking to that same policy regarding C5 fulfill other responsibilities as made from time to time, be implemented or established by the school board or administration. Very open-ended. Frankly, it kind of scares me that anytime you can develop a policy that decides how and what we need to do. So, again, I would respectfully request that this whole policy to be revamped. Also, I did ask last week who else was on the policy committee, and I understand it's Jane, correct? Is it you, Jane? Jane, Laura Seaver, and who was the other member on the policy committee?
Superintendent is on the policy committee.
So, we have the whole board, the superintendent, the business admin, she, she's not?
Laura's not on the committee. We get input from her from the HR department. And Jane is some legal and technical stuff that could come out as well.
So, it's the whole board, the superintendent, HR and business administrator. That's what you had said last week. Mr. Carvell replied, the policy committee was comprised of the school board, the superintendent, human resources and the business administrator.
So, the last meeting that we had over the summer was the whole board came together in a policy meeting because it is the responsibility of policies for the board. The board, these are board policies. So, the whole board got together with the policy committee to work on them as a group because they would come as a reading. Every one of the board members had input and developed these policies in those meetings. That's why there was two over the summer. One with legal, and that's where we had those. The policy committee standing continues to be two board members, the superintendent and Jane is in that. And then we get input from Laura and Janice French also keeps all the records in that meeting.
But she doesn't have input. She keeps the records, correct?
No, she has, yeah, she has records.
So, when you wrote, Mr. Carvell replied, the policy committee was comprised of the school board, the superintendent, human resources and the business administrator. That is incorrect then.
When we had it over the summer-
But I'm, I'm asking about the policy committee.
The committee itself-
My question was, who was on the policy committee?
Right. The policy committee, I just stated, but over the summer, the full board came together to write those as the committee because they are board policies. That's our authority.
My question was, who is on the policy committee?
I just told you that once again.
You said the board.
I'm not going to argue with you. I just told you who they are.
But I'm trying to, is HR on the policy committee enough?
Laura is not on the policy committee. She is, comes into the policy meeting and gives input to the policy.
Okay, so this just might want to be changed, is all I'm saying.
Carlo Boudreau, Nine Windsor Drive. Last meeting, I made a comment with regards to all the changes in policy. And it's the same comment again this month. Before we start directing how everyone else should behave, the first policy change you should have started with was how all of you were going to behave. That should have been the first one on the books that you corrected and you made exactly right before you're looking to change everybody else. I know I was told that you're working on it. That should have been priority number one. That's my thoughts. I still wish there was something out again, but again, we're here at another meeting and there's nothing with regards to the board conduct. Next, calendar. Are we going to place a calendar up of when you're going to have board meetings? We've always had one in the past, beginning of the school year, tells us what's going on for the rest of the year. Now, we all have to kind of check daily. Did they post anything? Did they post anything? We're not doing firsts and thirds like we normally do. No one knows to, when you're going to meet. Is it something that we're going to do or are we doing away with our calendar? Because it says, if you go onto the website, that it's in the process and, and working.
We're going to, we're updating the policy, the website, and then we'll have a schedule once that gets back up and running.
Could you say tonight when the next one is?
I don't know. It'll probably be in two weeks, right? Probably within the next two weeks, we'll have another.
So, my, my concern with not having a schedule is last meeting, we were so adamant that there was so much work to be done and we needed to have a full board and hit the ground running and do everything. You don't even have a meeting on the books. If we're that busy and there's so much to do, why don't you have a calendar?
Because our website's behind and we're not-
That doesn't, you can still give us a calendar. You could tell us the dates right now. That's, it's not the website.
Sorry, can't do it.
Calendar is a calendar.
Pete Basileir, 32 Spaulding Street. Just want to follow on. So, the board met with, the, the full board met with other members of the administration twice during the summer? Or is it once with the administration and once with legal? Or how did that go?
We were there. Jane and I were at the policy meeting this summer twice.
I'm sorry?
We were there. The policy committee as well as the full board.
The full board met twice on policies over the course of the summer?
Yes.
I, I didn't see it, so maybe it's the new website we're talking about. But were those, were those meetings posted?
Yes.
And minutes taken of the ones when the full board was there?
Yes, they were posted.
The meeting was posted ahead, in advance as a public meeting prior to the full board and it's, and the others meeting?
Yes, one of them was done right in here.
I know it was done, but you're telling me that the, the meetings were properly posted as, as public meetings?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go under non-public session under RSA 9182, strategies and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining? And also, I believe we have under RSA 91832 for personnel matters.
So, moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Motion passes four to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I really just would like to end the meeting on a high note and remind us why we're all here. I want to thank Tony and Chantel for coming and the outstanding presentations that you did. Thank you so much. Mike Hatfield for your input. Kristi for helping, provide feedback. And Tim, thank you so much for coming and supporting your colleagues. We really appreciate it. Tremendous work going on at the schools and that's the most important work. And I just want to keep that at the forefront of everything we do. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. We're now in a non-public session. Thank you.